So I have to recuse from 555 because of where I live. So Lucas and I were tentatively, you know, talking about him running this item. N dash twenty-nine dash twenty dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. All members of the city council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview dot legisstar dot com, on YouTube at mountainview dot G O V backslash YouTube and on Comcast channel twenty-six. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide all all public comments during the public comment period for any item by signing up at mountainview dot G O V backslash C C underscore speakers or by phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and entering webinar ID nine nine one six four six four five nine seven three. Any emails received by five P M. Today were forwarded to the city council. Emails received after five P M. Will not be read during the meeting, but we entered into the record for the meeting. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. And we'll move on to item two, which is roll call. I'll ask our interim city clerk Vanderlinen to do the roll.
Also, member Abigail.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lever.
Here.
Councilmember Madacek.
Here.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez. Absent. Mayor Kame.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item three, which is the study session. I am recusing myself from this item due to my real property interest, which is in close proximity to the proposed site. So before I leave and in the absence of Vice Mayor Ramirez, do I have the nomination of anyone who would like to lead the meeting? I'll turn to council member Madacek.
Thank you. I would like to nominate our most recent mayor, councilmember Abigail to run the study session tonight.
And I see councilmember Shawalter's hand, so I'm assuming that's a second. Is that right? Okay, great.
Yes.
So I think that we do need to take a roll call vote on this. So if we don't mind, interim city clerk Vanderlinen, do you mind taking the role?
Me, Mayor Kame, councilmember Abigail.
About it. Hi.
Councilmember Hicks. Yes. Councilmember Lever.
Hi.
Councilmember Madacek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Mayor Kame.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. I will turn I will turn over our virtual gavel over to our most recent mayor, councilmember Abigail, and I will see you all for the regular studies or the regular session. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me this honor, I think. So we will go into our study session and it is five 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 residential development project at five 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 West Middlefield Road. Does anyone have any disclosures that they would like to make from the city council in terms of any meetings that were held and et cetera? Yes, councilmember Madacek.
Thank you. I met with the applicant and I have been to the project site on my own and with residents. And I've also met with residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
Yes, I also met with the applicant and residents and I went to the site as well.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes, I met with the applicant and visited the site and have met with some residents as well.
Great. And councilmember Lever.
I met with the applicant.
And I too have met with the applicant as well as neighbors and visited the site and I think that is it for disclosure. So we will go to the presentation. And I believe it our senior planner Diana Pentzoli will be doing the presentation. Welcome, Diana.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Diana Pentzoli, senior planner with the city's planning division. And I have with me tonight Stephanie Williams, our planning manager and zoning administrator. The purpose for tonight's study session is to provide counsel with an update on a proposed project and receive counsel input on a project changes since the gatekeeper authorization for a residential development at five 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 West Middlefield Road development. The fourteen point five acre project site is located. Sorry, I don't know if you are able to see the slides. The fourteen point five acre project site is located north or south of Middlefield Road and comprises over the complete block between middle Moffett Boulevard, Highway eighty-five and Cypress Point Drive. The existing site is developed with four hundred and two apartment units, the associated surface parking lot and amenities as well. As part of the general plan, sorry, as part of the gatekeeper authorization in two thousand and fifteen, city council authorized staff time to work on this project, which was proposing a general plan amendment and a zoning amendment to add three hundred and twenty-three new residential units at the site by replacing the surface parking lot. The project was further reviewed by EPC and city council at a two thousand and seventeen study session. Their council provided further direction, which included many things, but primarily, you know, more refinement for contextual design and preservation of heritage trees on the site and also including higher BMR units, which will include moderate income housing household units as well. Following that, the applicant has worked with staff and has revised the project significantly. And the similar to today's study session, EPC reviewed this project changes in earlier this month on February third, two thousand and twenty-one at a public hearing as well. The project as proposed will be adding three hundred and twenty-nine units, replacing the surface parking lot and will also include dedication of a one point three four acre park alongside Cypress Point Drive. As I mentioned, since the initial gatekeeper authorization and initial city council direction at study session, the applicant has revised the project. These are some of the major changes that have happened over the years and staff would like to get city council input on the changes that are being proposed. Some of the significant changes are, you know, the number of units. Initially, it was three twenty-four at gatekeeper. It increased to three forty-eight at the study session in two thousand and seventeen and as proposed today, it is three twenty-nine units. This is still in compliance with the F A R, the height, the setback regulations of our four zoning district as proposed through the gatekeeper request. In terms of BMR units, initially it was ten percent lower income units, which was in compliance with the regulations at that time. And as proposed today, the applicant is proposing fifteen percent inclusionary units, which is in compliance with the city's current BMR ordinance, which was updated in two thousand and nineteen. One of the component of the project is a parkland dedication. When the gatekeeper authorization was done, it the proposal was for one point four eight acre park. But we got a lot of council direction and comments on the project design and the applicant has revised the design, trying to save more trees, including a bicycle pedestrian pathway. And the current proposal is for one point three four acre parkland dedication and the remaining parkland fees will be in terms of the park in new fees will be paid. A big component of the council comments and the community input on this project included preservation of a lot of heritage trees on site. During two thousand and seventeen study session, the proposal was to remove hundred and seventeen heritage trees. This has now been refined and applicant has worked hard. So the current proposal is just to remove sixty-two heritage trees on site. Another thing was regarding contextual design, the project applicant has refined the project design. Initially, it looked very a very office and commercial looking and working with staff and the development review committee. The design has been refined to look more residential, including a lot of warmer tone materials, variety of materials, including a lot of step backs and setbacks as well. So the first question for tonight is, does the council support the proposed changes or have additional project design conditions or directions for staff to continue with the development review process? As this is a gatekeeper project and this is not in a precise land area, a site-specific financial study was recommended for the for the project at the two thousand and seventeen study session. Staff is still continuing to finish that study. And before the studies concluded, the applicant has actually proposed to provide one point nine eight million in community benefit contribution, which will be going towards the C I P funds. That's the proposal that the applicant has done. And the question for council is whether they support the applicant's proposed community benefit proposal for this project. At the February third EPC meeting study session, EPC was supportive of the project at the proposed density of fifty-one dwelling units per acre. But they did raise a concern over possibility of future increase in density, provided that the general plan amendment proposal is to raise it to eighty dwelling units per acre. EPC suggested that staff should come back with some creative solutions for city council to consider, which will allow the project as proposed at fifty-one dwelling units per acre, but would rest would come up with some kind of a limitation so that, you know, a lot more density might not be added at the project site later on after the entitlement is done. The staff has actually included couple of options and alternatives in the staff report. And we would like to know tonight if city council can provide a direction on, you know, which general plan option they would like to prefer for the proposed project. So this is just a summary of the three questions that I just that I just went through. As the next step, the, you know, after the council, after the council direction will work on further development review and come back for tentative entitlement hearing at the end of this year. This concludes staff presentation. Staff is present here tonight. The applicant is also present here tonight. If you have any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. As this is a study session, we will go to public comment first and then we'll have council questions and comments. I just want to say we had this scheduled for an hour until six thirty is our regular meeting start time scheduled. So we're going to try to move this as quickly as we can. So I would like to have public comment set at a minute and a half, please. And and so we will start here. I think I have hosting rights now, so I will go ahead and start with Kelsey Baines. If you can unmute yourself to speak, please, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Hi, council. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am with the group Peninsula for Everyone and am calling in and strong support for this project. We know how many of our neighbors right now during COVID are living in overcrowded conditions or in substandard conditions, including in vehicles. And our housing crisis, even though, you know, the the demand has somewhat lessened in Mountain View because so many people are working remotely. The housing crisis is still very much with us and we need to respond to it. We need more homes. So thank you so much for looking at this project. I think it looks great. The developer has made a lot of changes to make it better. And I think it would provide a lot of great housing in a place with excellent access to services and in transit and all the things people need. So I will leave it at that. But yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. And city clerk, would you be able to put up the?
I will.
Great. Thank you. Um, we will go then to it's a phone number, last three digits, four, four, three. Please unmute yourself to speak. Hi there.
Hello, how you doing? Good. My name is Daniel Shane and I represent the Cypress Point Community Preservation Group. We have a membership of sixty-nine individuals. We've also obtained petition signatures from two hundred and seventeen homeowners in the neighborhood and we are opposed to the high density, the proposed high density housing development. We're not opposed to development or helping solve some of the housing shortages problems. We would like to see a scaled down project that would comply with all the medium density existing requirements as they are today. One of our main concerns is the cumulative impacts of all the high density developments and commercial developments that have been proposed that are under review, that have under construction or that have been completed. And I I sent a letter to all the city council members with a list of all these projects. And because of all these projects, five 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 West Middlefield is just one of many. We believe five 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 West Middlefield is actually of the fourteen I've listed. It is one of the ones that is 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 the most ill conceived and a development that doesn't fit in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
So just a the point, the point is, is that we would like to see a precise plan because of the many, many, many developments that are occurring in this area. Thank you.
We go to David Meyer. You're gonna mute yourself.
Thank you, councilmember Abigail. I might say Mayor Abigail, but councilor Abigail, thank you very much. Name's David Meyer. I represent Silicon Valley at Home and Affordable Housing advocacy organization that works across Santa Clara County, also lived in Mountain View for several years. Here tonight, just to express our support for the council to continue to move forward with this five 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 West Middlefield proposal. I can talk about, you know, many other things like about this project, but I want to highlight why I think this project is is really kind of reinforcing and a reflection of the success of the city of Mountain View's housing policies and goals. And I first, the the first thing is, you know, this proposal is actually doing its affordable component through integrated inclusionary units on site. This is something the city has really been trying to prioritize and make happen to actually make sure these units get built and to make sure that the city isn't spending as much in subsidy on on building affordable units. So I think that's that that's one example of of where this project is reflecting, you know, success of the city's affordable housing policies. Secondly, I don't think that we can really underestimate how important it is this proposal is provide new housing in existing residential area without displacing current residents. Many councilmembers here, members of the community, remember going through all of these displacement projects that we struggled through a couple of years ago and the city, you know, really took action to to make sure that that didn't happen in the future. And I think that a project like this is is a great example of those policies working where we're have a more dense proposal that's coming forward. It's bringing a new house in that's not displacing current residents. So I think Mountain View should be proud of that. And again, I think that's that's we're able to do that because of the density. So hope this project can move forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Cliff Chambers, please unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, this is Cliff Chambers, resident of Mountain View, and I'm representing the Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning. The applicant did make a presentation at one of our regular meetings and I had a second meeting with them. We strongly favor this project and we really commend all that have worked over this over the a number of years. We feel that the applicant has been very responsive to the design changes, which I think are vastly improved. And as you know, I mean, we really need the additional housing that's there and there's not the displacement issue. So the additional units are really needed in our city. We do have a concern about that we have expressed previously about the access to Stevens Creek Trail. We sent a letter in that more details this, but trail access from the site is really a major and an important point for us. And we'd really like the developer in the city to really work together to try to figure out something that will work better because the current access is really not ideal. And and we really like to see, we do like to see the increased density without the displacement. And there's a lot of other things that we have discussed in our letter and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Corey Smith. Please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon and good evening. Corey Smith, on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. We are a regional nonprofit that advocates for homes at all income levels. We are in strong support of the proposal in front of you and are requesting that you do everything within your power to continue moving it forward. Two comments I wanted to make. About an hour ago, I shared a co-hosted petition with all of you on council. The majority of those petition signers are Mountain View residents and and we appreciate locals speaking up in support of housing. We know that that is critical. The other piece that I wanted to touch on is a little bit wonky, but thinking about economic feasibility of projects and thinking about all of the community benefits associated with this proposal. We are in a climate right now where projects are getting slowed down, potentially stalling and potentially stopping because of economic feasibility. So respectfully request that you do not do anything to this project that would kill the deal. We want to see it move forward. We we know that we need to create homes for people and and your support in making sure that that happens is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
You go to Kathleen Wortham. Please unmute yourself.
Great. Thank you, councilmember Abigail. My name is Kat Wortham. I am the director of health and housing policy for the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. And we are here tonight to express our support for five 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 West Middlefield. I think we all know that there is a critical need for high quality housing, especially close to jobs and transit. There's no better place to build those homes than in the city of Mountain View and specifically in this area where you're very close to high quality transit, Caltrain, light rail, numerous bus lines and close to job centers. As you also know, we're experiencing a very deep housing shortage, which threatens the long term ability for our innovation economy to thrive here in Silicon Valley. And we're seeing that through this COVID nineteen pandemic as well. And we're just really excited to see the addition of onsite affordable units. Building affordable housing on site allows the city of Mountain View to reach its housing needs assessment or Reno goals. We really would like to see this project move forward and not see anything done to stall it. We need housing and we need housing now. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Robert Cox. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Okay, I'm Robert Cox, twenty-five year resident of Mountain View. My primary concern with approving a general plan amendment for this project R four, that's my concern. I've discussed the issue with a member of the EPC and was told that there is no legal way to tie the rezoning to this specific project. In the last few years, while serving on the EPC, I have witnessed many development approvals be made, but the projects do not get built in a timely manner as they were originally proposed, including this one. If this proposed project is not built, the city could be required to approve a different project at a density of eighty units per acre without a density bonus and up to hundred and twenty units per acre with a density bonus. Such a project would not be consistent with their surrounding neighborhood developments and could lead to a loss of existing CSFRA rent controlled units. Therefore, I recommend the council either determine whether an airtight legal guarantee can be made that the zoning change can be tied to this specific proposal and if not, delay the project until the R three ordinance is updated. So the rezoning can be tailored more closely to projects like the one being proposed. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. We'll go to Diane DeGiano. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I live on Cypress Point Drive and I am strongly opposed to this project. I think anybody that has been on our street and has heard the noise that comes from eighty-five going under Middlefield would not vote to take down the heritage trees along eighty-five or Middlefield. There's going to be over five hundred people living there right along the freeway. And to put them along the freeway without the protection of those redwood trees is not social justice, in my opinion. Our neighborhood thrives because of all the redwoods in our neighborhood. The condos across the street have a lot of redwoods. They spend a lot of money caring for their redwoods and it would be a tragedy to see those redwoods and also the trees, the street trees destroyed. I think Mountain View has a green policy and is proud of their green policy and this does not go according to that. Also, why is the city choosing the location of a park in in this particular location? Who is this park going to serve? There's two parks, two blocks away. Is there a better place for a park to be? Or should the one point three acres go back into the project so the trees can be saved? So that there could be more green spaces and the apartments could be moved back from eighty-five and Middlefield.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Annette Lynn. Please unmute yourself to speak. Annette.
Hi, my name is Annette Lynn. I am a resident of Cypress Point Lakes, which is very close to this development. And I just want to voice my own support for this project. It's a big issue, housing is, in Mountain View and I just think that this is a really great way to address it without displacing any existing residents. And as we all know, housing is a huge issue in Mountain View. And and right now with the dearth of other projects, I think that this is a really beneficial one. So I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Albert Jeans. Welcome, Albert. Please unmute yourself to speak.
Hello, Albert Jeans, thirty-eight year resident of Mountain View. I spoke about this project four years ago. It's a study session then. I am still against it. We can never satisfy this housing demand. Just look at the temperatures in Midwest this week, right? And here we are basking seventy degree temperatures. People will always want to move here. There will always be an insatiable demand. The question is, what kind of quality life do we want for our current residents and the people that we are able to build housing for? I'm not against building new housing. I think it's great that they want to, you know, get rid of the surface parking lots and put in some housing instead. But rezoning for high density, I think, is a mistake. I already have a thousand entitled units within two blocks of my house. That's Dura Estates. And that's over two thousand people. How can this area support another thousand people? I just don't see it happening. Schools, shopping, the whole bit. I just don't see it happening. Schools, shopping, the whole bit. I do think that they did a good job on making the place look a lot better. That was one of my big pieces with it when I spoke about it four years ago. I think they did a great job of saving the redwoods on Moffett that were really softening the fix there. And I also like the fact that they've provided adequate parking, up to two spaces per unit, which I really think is needed. On the other hand, though, I think they should, the city will have to think about the additional traffic on Moffett. And I think they should, you know, limit parking on Moffett and put in bike lanes since a lot of people now be using Moffett to get to downtown and other places. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to David Levin. If you could unmute yourself to speak.
Good evening. My name is David Levin, and I'm the Board President of the Cypress Point Woods Homeowners Association, a community of 88 voting households in the city of Mountain View, directly across the street. We're concerned about the environmental, social, cultural, and economic impact posed by Avalon Bay's redevelopment of its West Middlefield property. Although the project addresses Middlefield Road, the brunt of the project's negative impacts falls on households along the narrow Cypress Point Drive cul-de-sac. We're sensitive to the needs to increase housing in Mountain View. We ourselves are a multifamily community of 88 homes. But the median density zoning accommodates reasonable growth. Medium-density zoning still allows the developer to add another 145 units to its 402 existing units. Medium density will preserve the existing three-story height limits, which are important to us, and prevent new construction from towering over our two-story homes. Therefore, we urge the city to preserve our community's quality of life and reject Avalon Bay's attempt to change zoning to high density. And finally, I urge the council to distinguish and give special attention to the comments of neighbors who will be directly impacted as opposed to those with regional or developer objectives, as we are your neighbors and your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Hala Alshawani. Please unmute yourself. Hala.
Mute. Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Oops. Hello?
Oops. Yes, I'm sorry. I was muted. We can.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor Abigail and council members. This is Hala Alshawani. I've been a resident of Mountain View for almost 30 years. I own a property on Cypress Point Drive, and I am there every day to take care of my mom who resides at that condo. I am a great supporter of building high-density buildings, especially by the transportation area, but I am very much opposed to this project. Because in fact, the the effects and the impacts on the residents and the traffic of this project will primarily go on Cypress Point Drive, which is a substandard dead-end street with an adult education center right at the corner of Cypress Point Drive and Moffett. And if you are ever there, which I am every single day, and the classes take, you know, in-person classes resume, it's a nightmare to drive there. There are so many very close accidents that, you know, just about to occur all the time. So adding residents, doubling the residents across the street from Cypress Point Drive condos would make that just much, much worse. I also wanted to remind the council that their major goal, the fourth major goal, was to promote environmental sustainability and quality of life for all the residents for future and current times. So I urge you to apply that in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to April Webster. Please unmute yourself to speak. Welcome, April.
Hi, thank you. I am a long-term, a 10-year resident of 505 Cypress Point Drive. And I would like to voice my very strong support of the 55 Middlefield project. And I would like to urge council to continue working towards developing more affordable and denser housing in Mountain View with the goal of countering gentrification and increasing diversity and equity in our community. Many of the people who work in the service industry in our communities, the ones who keep our grocery stores, like JL Produce on the corner, restaurants open, our gas stations running, our hospitals clean, the ones who deliver our groceries and Amazon packages right now, so we don't have to put ourselves at risk. These members of our community keep the economy running, and they can afford to live in Mountain View. I think it is critical that we provide more affordable housing, so we don't end up displacing these essential members of our community. And I think continuing along the path, Ron, is untenable and unsustainable. And everyone's quality of life will suffer, not just theirs. I'm from Vancouver, B.C., and for a long time, the housing has been moving towards more denser and more affordable housing, especially along transit lines. And very often, Vancouver is in the top 10 cities, most livable cities in the in the world. So I I really don't think that this is going to impact negatively on the community of Mountain View. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alex Brown. Please unmute yourself to speak.
Hey, as always, I'll try to keep this quick. We need more housing. Building is expensive in a lot of ways, and redevelopment is in many ways more difficult than doing it well the first time. We should take this opportunity to build as much as we can. If there are concerns about capacity in the neighborhood, they should be addressed by greater investment, not by a fear of progress that paralyzes us and locks us into an imagined ideal past. Please don't permit current residents to harm future residents. The people who occupy these units also count, and their need for a roof over their heads matters. Also, the developers know I prefer the earlier design, and I think we need more interesting buildings. And all this nitpicking just leads to a bland and mediocre compromise. I think we should be weird. It's the future. Let's look like it. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Adam Klett. Please unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, everyone. So I'm a neighbor of this project, and I'm a homeowner near the area. I just wanted to voice my strong support of projects like this one. Responsible transit-oriented development is the only way to help ameliorate the terrible housing problems we have in this area. And I'd just like to see more projects like this taken on in a responsible way to, you know, see the future of this community grow and prosper. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Denley Rafferty. Please unmute yourself to speak. Welcome.
I'm here. This is Denley Rafferty, and I live at 505 Cypress Point Drive, right across the street from the proposed project. And I'm definitely opposed to it. The increase in traffic will be enormous. Right now, the street is crowded. And it will be more crowded with trucks and debris to make the project work. The residents doubling will cause a traffic jam. And the quality of life of the residents will surely go down. The tree situation is serious. These trees are put there to modify the the noise and pollution. And with fewer trees, it will, it will be horrible. So I would like to persuade you not to vote for this. I I think we need more housing, and we can do it without increasing the to maximum zoning. I'd like to keep it at moderate zoning and not increase it to maximum zoning. That's it.
Thank you. We'll go to, is it Celia Pomer?
Hi, yeah, my name is Celia Pomer. I am also a member of Green Spaces Mountain View. And I strongly support this development. I think Green Spaces Mountain View, while we are focused on green spaces in Mountain View, it's also about our greater climate change and more housing in Mountain View. While maybe it does mean some more traffic here, would mean a lot less traffic on places like people driving from Dublin and further away. And so that is greener for everybody. And I just, I really hope that we can make Mountain View a place where everyone who needs a space to live can find a space to live. And so we need more housing so that we can improve access for all of our residents, which is also greener in that people are housed. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? If you are in the attendee box, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, it's star nine. Last call. Oh, I see one more hand. It's a phone number ending in 330. Please unmute yourself to speak. Hello?
Hi, Madam Mayor, council members. This is Matt Regan calling from the Bay Area Council. I will be brief. You've heard a lot of the great attributes of this project already, and I won't add to any of the great comments made. But I would like to draw your attention. There's an item I couldn't help but notice that's later on in the agenda about why there are so few female firefighters in Santa Clara County. Well, the the answer is quite obvious. In order to purchase the median home in Santa Clara County, one needs to make a salary of $243,000. That's six times the national average. So the only solution to that problem, really, and that and many of the other problems that are driven by our housing shortages, to increase the supply quite dramatically to match the demand that quite obviously exists. You have a great project sponsor, a great developer, a great project, a great demand for said product. I would urge you, the Bay Area Council, would urge you to move forward with this project as quickly as as humanly possible. We're already five years into this process, and we're still doing study sessions. I think it's time for action. So please move forward as swiftly as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have Terry Rail. Please unmute yourself to speak. Terry.
Yes, hi. This is Terry Rail. I live at Cypress Point Lakes condominium association. I am not opposed to this project. However, I do want to ensure that the high density is only tied to this project and that it does not go above the amount of units that are current, that are currently proposed in the plan that has been given to the city. I also believe that there's two things that need to be considered. Number one is that the city really does have to figure out the Stevens Creek Trail access issue. That has to be figured out. We cannot have all these people trespassing through both Cypress Point Woods and Cypress Point Lakes to get to the Stevens Creek Trail, to get to downtown, to get to Caltrains. We cannot be the corridor through which all these people trespass to get to where they need to go. And secondly, I do think it may be time for the city to work with Caltrain. Because if indeed you're taking down the trees along 85, then maybe it is truly time to put up a sound barrier there, because there will be significant impact to this area.
Thank you.
My zero time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes public comments. And I will close that and bring it back to council for questions. I I was told that the developer would like to make a five-minute presentation. Also, I am mindful of the time depending on how we go. We might, I might, I'd like to have us do questions first for council members and then see where we are and then do the discussion if we have time. I'd like to try to wrap this up before we start regular session, but depending on how long we go, we may have to come back afterwards. So with that, we have, let's see, do we have the developer applicant available to speak? Mr., is it?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right, great. So I'm going to share my screen, and I will be, I will be brief because we're very eager to hear your your questions and your input. So my name is Joe Kurtchak. I'm with Avalon Bay Communities. I'm going to dive right into our project. We're really excited to present it to you tonight. The tan rectangles on this slide are the existing buildings. We are going to keep all of those existing buildings, the existing residential buildings where they are. We're going to keep all the existing residents. Everyone who lives there right now can stay. We won't be displacing anyone. The white shapes are the the proposed new buildings. Building A is in the center. Building B is on the left side of the screen, and Building C is on the right. Just going to hit the highlights really quickly. This is a transit-oriented development. We're less than a half mile walk to downtown. We're proposing to add 329 new homes. Forty-nine of those will be affordable. That's up from 10% up to 15%. And as I said, no displaced residents. We're going to give 1.3 acres to the city for a new public park. As Diana mentioned, there's a new pedestrian and bike path. We've put a lot of time into a thoughtful tree preservation strategy. And we've got a strong commitment to sustainability. These buildings will be gold. They'll be all-electric. I want to skip through some some information here on phasing and on parking and on architecture. I I will say, though, that all of these are are areas where we've made major changes over the past years in response to community feedback, to design review feedback, to EPC and council feedback, as well as working with staff. You know, for example, one of the changes we've made is to actually reduce the number of parking spaces that will be accessed from Cypress Point and move a whole floor of a garage so that there's a huge new chunk of parking that will be accessed from Middlefield. But what I want to spend a little bit of time on is is some views. We've, you know, we've seen the architecture, and I think, you know, we've showed it at EPC. I want to talk a little bit about what this is actually going to look like when people visit this site. We've taken a number of photos focused on Cypress Point Drive, because that's where where the focus of the community concerns have been. And we dropped in the rendering, so I have a bunch of little before and after shots here. Some of these are from the street. Some of these actually we we offered to the neighbors, and the neighbors took us up on, you know, coming in and taking some photos from patios or balconies, just to get a better sense of what this will look like. This first photo is from the street. It is in front of Building B, pretty close to the corner of Cypress Point and Moffett. So this is what it looks like today. This is what the new building will look like. This is again Building B. This is from the sidewalk across the street, looking at the current parking lot. This will become new homes. This is from a from a second-floor balcony. Looking again at that same parking lot, there's one of the existing buildings is here behind this tree. This is what it will look like with the new the new buildings in place. A couple, a couple of shots from the center of the street, this is the sort of halfway down Cypress Point. This concrete parking structure is on the left. It'll turn into a new park. And again, looking straight across, this is a concrete parking structure that will work land. And then finally, Building C, towards the end of the street, this is the existing parking lot. Will turn into a new, a new residential building. And then looking at it straight on, this is where the street is is much wider. It has the large median with eucalyptus trees that will all be staying in place, and the building will be behind that median. So just want to give a flavor, you know, not in an architectural rendering, but in a in a photo realistic view of what it is folks can expect when, you know, for a lot of buildings, buildings. I want to touch on the project timeline briefly. As some folks have said, we started this in 2015 with a Gatekeeper approval. We've been through many rounds of study sessions, many rounds of designer reviews and community input. And that's made the project much better. I hope, you know, folks have been able, and you know, I think the staff report laid it out pretty well. We've made a lot of major changes that that have addressed community concerns. It's also been five and a half years. And, you know, now we're, our understanding is that the city is nearly ready to publish the draft DIR. We're on schedule for approval in either summer or fall of this year. That would allow us to start construction in 2023, which would be about an eight-year start-to-finish process, just to start the construction process. And the reason I bring this up is that I want to briefly touch on question number three on tonight's agenda. We ask that you not create any additional delay by starting a lengthy new general plan process for the project. We've been pursuing this project for over five years. We think this is the right way to develop the site. For all the reasons that we've mentioned, this is this is the right building for this location, and that's why we proposed it, and that's why we've stuck with it for this entire time. If we are able to earn this council's approval for this project, we have no intention of throwing that approval out and starting the process over with a brand-new project, which is what the concern that's that's been expressed. We're happy to discuss this concern, and we, you know, we have some ideas about how to address it, but we we do encourage the council to move forward. but we, we do encourage the council to move forward with the project's approval process as proposed. With that, we're very eager to hear your feedback and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So for the council, bring it back to council. If you have questions for staff or the applicant, please feel free to chime in. If you could raise your hand, that would be great. Any questions from council members? Yes, council member, Madachuk.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. In the staff report, it talks about strategic economics doing a project-specific study for community benefits that will be done this summer. And I, I want to make sure I'm understanding what's being proposed here. Is the applicant proposing that rather than wait for the results of that study, that we just provide our input on whether or not the 2 million in community benefits is what we can go forward with? Or are we going to revisit this after the strategic economics study is done?
I can respond to that. So the applicant is proposing an amount, and I think we're waiting to hear the council's comments. We always like to do an economic feasibility study just to get additional information. And that will sort of inform us a little bit more. But economic feasibility studies tend to be fairly generic. And we don't really know the, the developer's books, so to speak. So it's good to get an initial response or proposal from the applicant that we could then test. And then what we hear from the council will help us communicate back to the applicant to see if, if there's more interest in doing something different.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to clarify, the current Moffett Boulevard change area does not include this property. Is that correct?
I'll let Diana respond.
I just was looking it up real quick while we were in this meeting here, and I think I found a page that says it's not included.
Yeah, it's not, it's not part of the Moffett change area.
Okay, thanks very much. That's all the questions I have right now.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. Oh, I'm sorry, council member Hicks, your hand is very light.
Sorry. Well, I just got the question. So if you're saying it's not in the Moffett change area, does that mean if we did a precise plan, it would also not be in the Moffett precise plan? Or could we change that? That's my question.
I'll try to respond. If it's, it's not in the Moffett change area and obviously wasn't gone to contemplated to be part of the precise plan. If the council's interested, we're going to have to take that back and, and take a look at what else we'd want to encompass into a revised precise plan.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I have a couple. This is in regards to, one is about parking. As I think council member Hicks and I, living here in downtown, have discovered, it's not always just about how many parking spaces are built, but where they are built. And these underground parking lots tend to be tricky. Folks don't seem to really want to go underground and use them. And so how do we ensure that the residents, the future residents of this development will use those parking spaces in the lot, in the garage, rather than parking on the streets?
Well, usually it is not a condition of approval tied to the project. It is, you know, it is an understanding that, you know, people would like to park in their secured parking spaces rather than parking on the street. And that is the under, the basic understanding with which we, we look at the projects. The, the developer can certainly have other kind of mechanisms in place, but that's the best that, you know, we do under our purview.
I'll just add that for this project and for most residential projects, they're specifically assigned to units and are very heavily used as assigned because people can be quite possessive about their parking spaces. They tend not to park on the street if they're given a space.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would, I'm sorry, I'm going to get into discussion or comment here, but I would question that because I think if your unit is on the street, facing the street, I see folks wanting to park right in front on the street. So I, I don't know, you know, it's not just specific for this project, but I really do feel that we need to figure out some way of monitoring the parking and so that, you know, these spaces that are very expensive to build are actually being used and not, you know, spilling over to the other parts of the neighborhood. So that would be my one, yeah, sorry, that became commentary. The other piece, the other question has to do with construction. And again, this is all based on, you know, experiences learned, lessons learned over time. But as again, council member Hicks knows, on our street, we had two projects back to back being built. And it was probably a total of four years without much rest at all in between that we had to endure the construction, which was quite a lot with cars and noise and, and parking and big trucks parking in front of our houses and so forth. I, that's my concern. They're talking about phasing this over five years. What can we do to, you know, make it less onerous for the neighborhoods to have to endure that length of time of construction?
So, you know, as part of the project proposal, we are reviewing their phasing plan. I think there was a discussion about the parkland leasing back to the, to the applicant as well in order. There are, there are a lot of competing elements of the project, you know, parking is, on-street parking issues is as important as, you know, as construction noise as well. We do have a lot of standard city conditions, which speaks to construction noise, the kind of construction equipments that needs to be used, the timeframe of that. And, you know, the same construction noise aspect has been, is being reviewed and analyzed as part of the EIR as well. But, you know, as part of our standard conditions of approval, we will be following all the high-density residential conditions that we have to mitigate any kind of construction noise that, that comes up from, from the project.
And I will add that we have the potential to add a construction, parking and management plan. So at every phase of construction, we're able to see where the parking is and where the materials are stored.
Okay, great, thank you. And finally, I thought I had included this in my written questions, but it seemed to have dropped off. It's regarding the general plan or the zoning of R4. I remember way back in 2004, I think it was, when we were doing the R4. It was at sixty units an acre. I was told, I asked about that, why it's eighty units an acre now. And I was just wondering how that change came about. Was it, was there a study done to, with that change that up increased? Or was it just a council vote decision?
So the, the density associated with R4 was increased as part of the Flower Mower project on Evelyn Avenue to align with the high-density, the corresponding high-density general plan designation, which goes up to eighty units breaker.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? If not, let's go into comments. And we have the three questions that were asked about design, community benefits and general plan designation, I believe. And then if there are other comments in addition, please feel free to add that. And yes, let's see if we can do this fairly efficiently. Who would like to start? And I just, I wanted to actually say, say to the public, I know we've received a lot of emails about this. We are not making a decision on this project tonight. This is just purely to provide feedback as we move through the process and the next iteration of. All right. Anyone like to start? Council member Hicks?
So I'll start by saying I'm, I'm generally supportive of this project. I, you know, I, I thank staff and the applicant and EPC for all the, the changes they've made, the improvement with trees and driveway and contextual design. And then, you know, it's, it's also obviously good that there's no displacement involved. My big reservation about the project is that it's not included in a precise plan. I think that, you know, this is transit-oriented development. We're, we're an underpass that will be a pedestrian and bike connection between our traditional downtown Castro Street. And I think this should be, if we're doing transit-oriented development, well, this should be the second half of our downtown. I should be able to walk from my house near Castro, on Castro, near Castro Street to my friend's house on Moffett with the same kinds of, you know, we're bringing density to this neighborhood. We should also be bringing the same walkability that I have in my neighborhood. I should be able to walk down a wide sidewalk with trees and with ground floor publicly, public uses. The kind of uses that, that, that help people get out of their car. You know, I, I walk regularly to the drugstore or dentist or to pick up, you know, eggs or whatever I've run out of at the local market. And I want to make sure that at this point, we're developing along Moffett in a way that's very piecemeal. The residents who wrote us letters are completely right that there are, you know, up of almost fifteen proposed developments there. I don't want it to happen in a patchwork faction. I'm not happy that the sidewalk on Moffett for this, for this development is five to six feet wide, which is, which is the same as next to my single-family home where most of the homes are one-story. We can go up to two stories. As we get buildings that go up to fifty feet, which I support near transit, we can't have the same sidewalks or nearly the same sidewalks that we had, you know, that we had when they were single-family neighborhoods. That discourages people from walking. So, you know, this project has been in process for quite some time, but I would encourage, and I don't know what can be done at this point, but I really encourage that I really want to do a precise plan and not. Well, it also means that we have not been able to consider the impacts on the rest of the community as well as I would have liked. You know, is Cypress Drive, whatever it's called, is that a shared street that people walk their dogs on, have their kids play? Or do we see it as a more auto-oriented street? I don't think we've really had that conversation. So I support this project, but I want to integrate it into our, our, the second half of our downtown as well as we can. Widen the sidewalk if we can at this point. And I don't want to be developing anything else along Moffett until we do a precise plan. I think that that's, I think we're really at the point where we have to do that. Those will be my comments for now.
Thank you. Okay, the council member Shawalter.
Thank you. I, there are certain attributes to this development that I, I'm really pleased with. One is the development of a park. I, I think that it's going to provide a social focal point for everyone who lives on Cypress Point. And that's, that's going to be a big improvement. So that's important to me. The fact that they have figured out how to do this without displacing any of the existing relative, any of the existing residents is just fantastic. I mean, we have been working on this for years as a city, and the responsiveness to this is, is really important. It, it, it helps the quality of life so much of the people who live there. Another thing that I'm, I'm very pleased to see is the condo mapping of the building along Moffett. You know, we have been talking for years about needing entry-level, you know, entry-level residents, just housing units, and they aren't going to sell them, they aren't going to sell them as condos immediately, but they'll be able to over time. I think that's really an important improvement. Also, it's very close to Caltrain. People are going to be able to walk. And it's close to the Stevens Creek Trail, and it's going to be lead gold. I mean, those are all extremely positive things. So I'm, I'm supportive of this. Of course, the traffic is a big issue. I think the builder has been responsive with the placement of driveways to help with the traffic patterns and, and as they should be. But I, I, I do like the idea of widening the sidewalk on, on Moffett. Council member Hicks is, is right. You know, we, having a wider sidewalk is much more conducive to, you know, to, to people walking more. And we want them to walk more and we want them to walk to Caltrans. So that, those are my comments. And I would like to, to do a, a precise plan for this area as well. But I don't think we want to put off this project because of that. I think we just need to go forward with this one and put, make sure that that Moffett precise plan gets in the hopper as soon as possible.
Thank you. Council member Shawalter, did you have any comments on the community benefits? And I should ask council member Hicks this too, but the three questions were about design, community benefit and general plan designation. Did you have any comments on?
Yeah, I, I, thanks for putting them up. Yeah, I, I support the proposed project changes. I, I, I think that the applicant has been responsive to both the DRC and the, the neighborhood, and that's great. I, I think the benefit, the community benefit is reasonable under the circumstances. It'll fit into our, you know, to the, the program that's being developed right now. And I think that the existing general plan option is, is, is reasonable. But it would be good if we could figure out some way to put a time cap on that change. I mean, for instance, could we say that the general plan is changed if this project goes forward in the next five years? And if it doesn't, they have to come back to us to have that reviewed.
That'd be my comment. Thank you. Council member Madachuk?
Thanks. I had some general comments and then I'll go through the three questions. And so the last time we saw this, I expressed my concern about it. And my perspective really hasn't changed since that time. I'm concerned that this went through the gatekeeper process when it is not in an identified change area. So I feel like our general plan had lots of community input, and we identified five change areas. And that's kind of our contract with our residents to say, we heard what you said, and here are the areas that we've all agreed we will see growth. And this is not one of them. So I would not have supported this going through the gatekeeper project. And the reason, one of the reasons there's been a, a longer time processing this is because the applicant is requesting a change to the zoning. It's not that the city council or the city is, you know, dragging this out. The applicant is asking for a change, which does require more effort. So, and, you know, if the applicant had designed a building that was more compatible with the existing neighborhood, it wouldn't have to have been completely redesigned. I feel like there's a lot of things that the applicant could have done if they wanted this process, this project to go faster. And they could have stuck within the current zoning, you know, paid more attention to the architecture in the surrounding area, and it would have gone faster. And so for question one, I, I still am uncomfortable with the massing of this project. While some aspects have been changed, I would like to see the corner element reduced even more. I, I'm not one who believes you have to have a statement on the corner. And I think that's what they're trying to achieve. I think it needs to be scaled back. And the fourth story needs to be removed. I also think the fourth story needs to be removed. I also think the fourth story needs to be removed along all of Cypress Point Drive. While it's stepped back, it still adds to the massing. And that's a concern. It adds to the number of people, the amount of traffic, and all the other things we've talked about that comes with more units. I am not crazy about the model parking standard. And I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Abi Koga made. When you have stoops, people tend to park on the street. And so I, I do want the applicant to figure out a way to have people park in their parking spaces and not on the street. I would like to see if even more heritage trees could be saved. And I appreciate Councilmember Hicks bringing up the sidewalk, because I agree, along Moffett Boulevard, it needs to be wider. Especially because even though this is not part of the change area, we want it to be compatible with the change area and not have a dramatic difference as you walk down Moffett to Middlefield and beyond. So it should be a wider sidewalk there, because I think the rest of Moffett will be a wider sidewalk. On question two, the community benefits. And, you know, I think it'll be interesting to see what the study comes back with. But I want to raise visibility of the fact that typically the benefits are greater than the community benefits, because this is a gatekeeper project. And so, you know, we've talked about some projects that are close to this development that would improve the area. And I'm thinking that in addition to the community benefits that's calculated, I would like to see the Stevens Creek Trail connection designed and built by this development. It would address the, some of the connectivity issues. And I think it would be a nice project to add to this one. And the third question, I, I appreciate the EPC raising this issue, especially because we have seen that, you know, we can't predict the future. And we have seen where things we do today turn out differently in the future. The project that comes to mind for me is 777 West Middlefield, where that was a gatekeeper project by one applicant. And then after they received gatekeeper status, they sold the project or the parcel to another developer. And that developer came, developer came back with a much different project that was much higher massing density. And so I appreciate staff's recommendation in the council Q and A. And I would like to pursue that one, which was keep it as a P district. And then if I could find, maybe staff wants to talk about this one a little bit more. But to me, it sounded intriguing. And keep the P district and then create a new general plan, then you designation of 36 to 50 dwelling units per acre. And that would be my preferred route for this if it goes forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you. Well, I wanted to first say how, how pleased I am with the evolution of the, the design. And kudos to staff and the applicant for bringing something forward that's much more compatible with the existing area. And I, I think just easier on the highs. And I, I also agree with the, the sidewalk with comments that were brought up. I, I think that particularly as Moffett Boulevard becomes less of a pass through, given the, the changes at Caltrain, that it's going to be more important to have a more walkable environment there and, you know, reduce speed and et cetera. And I think that a wider sidewalk is one of those indicators in addition to just being, being very useful. I do think that we have to put some attention into the issue of the street parking. The, there would be competition with the adult school, particularly in the evening when the adult school has their classes or are doing GED testing. The parking lot at the adult school is just not enough to hold folks. And folks are coming from work and they're trying to get to their test. And so it's going to be important to have some kind of parking control on that. I do really wish that there was some way of doing rent rebates for the existing tenants. Obviously, it's a huge overwhelming benefit that this is, this project as it's proposed is not displacing people. But this is a lot to live through in terms of the construction and digging. Parking, underground parking is, is a big deal. And the project does represent the loss of certain amenities, the loss of the tennis courts and the loss of the pool for, you know, a period of time. And, and so I'm really interested to see ultimately if there is a way under our rent control of doing some kind of rent rebate during the time of construction. And then in terms of the community benefits, I'm, I'm eager to see more on, on that and to understand more about the relationship between Caltrans's involvement in the city and, and Public Works fleshing through things. But I, I think overall, this is a textbook example of what we need to be doing in the future. We are historically far behind on, on housing construction. And there's nothing particularly special about street level parking sheds taking up, you know, some of the most expensive real estate in the world. And so I'm, I'm very supportive of, of a transition from surface parking to homes. And I, I think that we have to do what's in our power to do that. And I am happy to see staff's analysis of the general plan option that gives us the protection against any kind of shifting in responsibility or deals or anything else. And, and just doing, you know, what we've been, what's been put before us. I'm, I'm pleased with. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I will add my comments and I want to thank staff for their hard work on this project and the applicant for coming back. I, I am pleased with many of the changes, especially on the design of the project. I do agree, as looking back at our, the last time I think we saw this was in 2017, and that was the first iteration. And looking at the comments, the direction that EPC and the council gave, I think they, applicant has met many of them, answered to many of them. The one that I noticed and Councilmember Maticek brought this up as well was the lowering of the fourth story along Cypress Point. I know that they did that for Block B and actually think Block B looks good. But Block C, actually at the, you know, end, it's really, it, it wasn't lowered. And I know that it was set back, but our specific direction, I believe, was to lower it. And so I would like to see that, that change occur. You know, we make these comments based on what we see. And we've discussed, and I think there was consensus, and that's why it was included in the staff report. So I would expect the applicant to respond accordingly. You know, I know that folks like to change or try to do something else, but I think we were pretty specific on that. So I would like to ask for that. I think there was consensus, and I will add my vote to widening the sidewalks on Moffett as well as, what was that? Yes, I think that was the other one. So overall, we need, I, I know Councilmember Hicks has brought this up. And when we did the general plan update, we do have the change area in Moffett, the Moffett area, because we're really looking at it being an extension of downtown. And in light of us closing car traffic on Moffett eventually with the transit center redesign, I think that we should try to make it more pedestrian and bike friendly. So I would support the widening of the sidewalks there. The other area, let's see, in terms of design, I think those were the two. I, I, that, that stood out for me. In regards to community benefits, so as Councilmember Maticek mentioned, this was a gatekeeper. And, you know, as we've talked about this many times, but a gatekeeper, I look at it as special consideration. It is, you know, not a part of a general plan or a precise plan of change area or a precise plan. And so, you know, these are these one-off projects. If I were back going, if I could go back in time to 2015, what I would have done was to move forward the Moffett precise plan. This answers Councilmember Hicks's comment or response to that. And, and change that area, because we actually were seeing these projects, 777, 555, the Buddhist temple. These projects were starting to kind of bubble up. And had I been on council at that time, I would have asked us to do that, move forward with the precise plan and enlarge the area to include all of these properties. My main concern with this area is traffic. And especially because we're going to be closing the, the, you know, the Castro Street, the throughput there, I can see more traffic coming through for folks trying to get to Shoreline or to 85. And so adding this much more density is a concern to me. And I really think we have some traffic impacts that we're going to be needing to, to mitigate. And so for me, going back to community benefit, I expect more than what is in our precise plans with these, with gatekeepers. So I had asked a question in the written questions about a transportation fee, which we have included in North Bay Shore and East Wisman. But, you know, was told that because this is a gatekeeper, we don't have that. I actually expect the same and then some. So, you know, I appreciate the $2 million community benefit contribution being proposed, but I would actually apply that to traffic or transportation mitigation. And, and then on top of that, what is the community benefit? The park, I appreciate the land dedication, but that I believe would have happened anyway, because after, if a project, five acres or more, we require a park. So perhaps we can require building the park, because that usually comes on to the city's responsibility. I like the idea, I guess I wasn't completely understanding of the Stevens Creek Trail and where we are and where we could go with that. But I would support, I think it was Councilmember Maticek's recommendation that we get the, the, the connection there studied and built by the applicant. And so those would be two areas. Build, build the park, transportation fee, and access to Stevens Creek Trail. So three items that I thought of off the top of my head. And then finally, with the general plan designation. So yes, I remember our four being 60, went up to 80. Okay, I can understand that, but that's a huge gap between 36 to 80 units. And since this is, you know, around 50 or 51, I think we should create a zoning category for that, 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 that amount in between. Because my, as it was mentioned, you know, things change over time. We've seen many of these projects come in. They've come in three times, these change projects come in. We don't know what's actually going to happen until it happens. And so to ensure that we, you know, may keep what's, what is being proposed or as close to it as possible, I would like to, for us to do the P district and then create a new zoning designation of 36 to 50 dwelling units. Frankly, I would actually like to, I wanted to ask if we can, and I know we have our work plan goal setting coming up, but I do want to re, reestablish the Moffett precise plan as a work plan item or a goal. Look at the, actually the area and include all of these project, gatekeeper projects into it, so we can really study the cumulative, as mentioned, the cumulative impacts, especially around traffic, parking. You know, this is the corridor we've looked at for the AGT, the Automated Guideway Transit. Whether, you know, we're going to do it or not, at least we should start preparing for it. And I think, I would expect these projects to contribute to those types of infrastructure mitigations that we're going to need for the added density. And my final comment too, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the housing advocates coming in. Yes, we are, you know, definitely need housing. Although I will say with COVID, we, we don't know what the future holds. The RENA numbers, we, I believe in cycle five, we've actually exceeded our total numbers. I had asked the question about cycle six, which is coming up in 2023. This project, if it, if we approve it before June 2022, I believe, the answer was that it wouldn't count. And so, you know, folks are really concerned about RENA, which we should be. I think we have to actually, you know, the look at, how do we, how do we meet numbers? You know, I've really been questioning what we get if we exceed our numbers. We don't get anything really right now. I'm learning a lot more as I serve on MTC about, with ABAG and Plan Bay Area. And there's some conflicting principles in there. So, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've done a good job building housing. We're meeting, exceeding our RENA numbers this cycle. You know, we have a big number coming up. And so I think we might have to look at timing based on that cycle too. So, yeah, so, you know, in terms of rushing this through, like, I'm not in a real rush. I want to make sure it's the right development for this property. And, you know, in terms of the five years, yes, I mean, it was a gatekeeper. Frankly, gatekeepers take longer. Could have done the precise plan, gotten that done in two years. And then this could have sailed through, didn't happen that way. So that's why we're, that's part of why we're here. And yeah, had the design originally been really nice that we liked, probably wouldn't have sent it back. So, you know, time is on both sides, I would say. But, you know, it's as much on the applicant's side as, as, well, I would say even more than on the city in this regard. So I think that answers all the questions. Does staff, do you need me to try to summarize some of this?
That would be very helpful.
And then please chime in, other, other council members, if I miss anything. But I think for design, what I saw was, I didn't get, I guess I didn't get like majority. I don't know, do we need to go back? Like, I could ask for the reduction of the fourth story on Cypress Point. Like, hands up on that one. And maybe, oh, Vice Mayor's back. Vice Mayor, I do.
Hi. Thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga. And thank you very much for running the meeting while I was out. I've, I've just been discharged, so I, I sound a little bit like a frog. I was able to hear a good chunk of the, of the, the public comment and the discussion. And I know we want to be sensitive to the time. So in case it's helpful, I'm happy to, to give my quick responses to the, to the three questions. So for the first question, I'm, I'm supportive of the, the project changes. I, I think, you know, the, you know, it's, it's, it's been actually very encouraging to see the applicant respond quite well, I think, to a lot of the, the initial concerns from, from the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with the direction things are going. So, you know, if, if, you know, it, I, I think, you know, this isn't project approval. So I, I think it's, it's. So, um, I, I think it's, it's, it's important to keep, uh, soliciting public input. Um, but, but I think as, uh, as it stands, the, the changes are quite good. And I'm, I'm very encouraged to, to, to see where they're going. Um, for, but, uh, question two, I support the community benefit proposal. I think the only, the only thing I would want to emphasize is it's really important that the, uh, the community benefit, uh, funding be reinvested in this neighborhood. This is the area that's going to be impacted by the development. And, you know, wherever the funds ultimately are invested, whether it's transportation improvements or some of the feasibility studies that, um, were described in the staff report. Um, I, I think it's important that, that all of that money, uh, benefit this neighborhood. Um, but I think, you know, at, generally speaking, the, the proposed, uh, community benefit is, is, is pretty good. And, uh, for question three, yeah, I've, I've been thinking a lot about this. Um, I, I appreciate the planning commission, uh, you know, bringing, bringing this concern up. I think this, this is a, uh, an, an issue that, that, you know, we have to contend with, with any gatekeeper, uh, application. For, for this particular project, I think the, the most important consideration in my mind is that we, we treat it, um, fairly and, and equitably, uh, you know, we've approved, general plan amendments that, uh, increase, uh, that, that, that go from, you know, some version of the medium, uh, density land use designation to high density. You know, for instance, um, for us, I think, seven, 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 West Middlefield, uh, east, uh, the East Wisman Project, Flower Mart, and then the Villa Street Project, the Prometheus Project over there. And I think if we're going to treat this project differently, there needs to be, um, some, uh, some, some justification for, 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 for doing so. And I can't personally think of, of what, what distinguishes this project from those other projects where a general plan amendment was, was approved to go up to, to high density, uh, residential. And I'm, I'm actually very comforted that the applicant is, uh, is proposing a project concurrently. Uh, you know, I, I, I try not to reference my, my day job in San Jose, but very often applicants will just propose a general plan amendment and a, and a conforming zoning without a project. And I think that's dangerous because we don't know what we're going to get. In this case, um, you know, we have the, uh, we, we have a very specific project. We have the environmental, uh, review. Um, and, and I think, you know, if, if we want some greater assurance that the project, you know, that's approved, if it, if it is approved, looks like, um, or, 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 you know, reflects the project that is ultimately constructed. Um, I think, you know, looking at a, at a condition of approval that will require additional discretionary review. You know, if, if modifications are made, is, is probably the most appropriate way of addressing that. But to summing up, uh, question one, yes, uh, comfortable with the, the, the changes. Uh, question two, uh, yes, um, uh, I support the community benefits proposal. And for, for question three, I think, um, I think it was option one in, in the staff report. You know, I, I, I can't, I can't think of a way to just, you know, why we would distinguish this from other, um, projects with a high density, uh, residential land use change. Um, so, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, with proceeding with the project as is. And particularly given that the, the planning commission had, had expressed support for the project, right? I, I understand the discomfort with, with the, the concerns about the land use designated, land use designation change in the abstract, but, but the project itself was, was supported. And so that gives me some comfort. I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you, uh, Councilmember Hicks. And if you could also answer, um, community, the question about community benefits, um, in general plan designation, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, that's what I, that was my intention, that I skipped over this. Sorry. So, um, yeah, so I like the applicants', uh, community benefits. I also like the idea of the Stevens Creek Trail connection. Um, and also a resident had brought up, uh, sound mitigation, uh, that, uh, possibly because of the trees that are, are coming down. And, uh, you know, as always, if there's any way of, of saving additional trees, I, that, I guess that's not a community benefit. That's another con- so the other comments that I had not addressed, I agree, I don't need a corner statement tower. Um, and any additional trees would be appreciated. And also that it's, it's, it is very important to have a mechanism to get people to use those underground garages, even if it's just public education. I know that when I lived in a nearby apartment, I parked on the street because I wasn't aware of how disturbing that was. So some mechanism, you know, I'm at fault myself. Um, it's just so easy to park on the street if you come at the right time. And then, um, I, as far as the general plan amendment, uh, I would be interested in exploring staff's recommendation, they keep it as a P district and go on from there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, I'm going to try to summarize. I, um, I think there is, I heard consensus for, uh, the Moffitt, widening of Moffitt sidewalk, saving more trees, uh, the Stevens Creek Trail connection. Um, and then, um, I guess, uh, I wanted to, well, I got three for taking off the corner tower. Um, I, I, I guess I need to get a raising, hands shown for whether to reduce the, reduce the four-story on, along Cypress Point right there. Is there a majority for that? Raise your hands. Let's see if I can scroll through the screen. I see three. Um, and then, uh, oh, the G, the general plan designation for P district, I heard three. Is that, is there anyone else? Hands raised for the P district? I see three there. Um, and then the other benefits I heard, uh, oh, parking controls, is there? I mentioned consensus or majority on that. Let's see, one, two, three. Okay, I'm missing some. Okay, and then, um, I think Councilmember Lever brought up, um, rent rebates for existing residents. Any interest in that? I would actually support something like that. I do think that the existing residents need some, some kind of benefit from this. I think I saw three there. Um, and am I missing anything?
Excuse me.
Plan? Oh, I'm sorry, general plan designation, oh, the P district. So I raise hands on that. I see three there. Um, anything else? Did we get everything? Yes, Councilmember Lever.
I think that Councilmember Showalter may have added on to the possibility of rent rebates.
Okay.
And, um, then the parking restrictions, I, I'd like to see, um, some, uh, accommodation to, to work better with the adult school. Um, and I know that it's been said here that when people have stoops, they park in front of those stoops. Um, but on the other side of, uh, uh, on this side of, uh, Central Expressway, that I've noticed that that hasn't been the experience, that people do park in their designated parking, but then other people come and park in front of the stoops. Um, so I'm interested in the parking restrictions relative to the adult school. And allowing, um, the parking demand from the adult school to continue.
Councilmember Abicoga, if I might suggest, uh, because we had, uh, the Vice Mayor join the discussion, uh, it may be best for staff if there could be a majority consensus sought, which would be four out of six, uh, votes, if that's possible, um, to give staff further clarity on, on majority support for certain items.
Okay, um, I guess what I'll do is, I, I, I've been taking the numbers. So I'll just have to ask Vice Mayor Ramirez, one by one, which ones he supports and doesn't. Um, and then we'll get to four. Um, anything else?
If I may, um, just for clarification, I know in the summary, we talked about Stevens Creek connection, but in terms of the general proposal itself, if we, if we can get a, a sense of, um, if we have a majority there supporting the-
I'd like to make a comment about that.
Uh, yes, I, I'm sorry, it will, uh, Ms. Panchelli, did you have anything else? And then I'll go to Councilmember Michelle Walter.
No, that's it.
Councilwoman Michelle Walter?
Yeah, there has been some investigation of the, um, connection of the Stevens Creek Trail. And because of the configuration of, um, uh, the streets and, and eighty-five, i- i- it's really very difficult. So, um, I, I, there is a possibility of running the trail, uh, sort of against, you know, right against the, the end of the development and putting something in there. But I, I, I kind of question whether that's really an improvement. So I, I don't think we should be figuring that out tonight. We might say that we would, you know, we would like Stevens Creek Trail improvements, but, um, there are feasibility issues associated with, um, uh, connecting them at Middlefield. And, and, um, you know, we do not have, uh, jurisdiction over, uh, Caltrain, Caltrans and eighty-five. And so there are some things that just aren't going to work there. And I sort of learned that, um, through, through some problems when I worked at the Water District. So, um, I think we have to be careful requiring, uh, a, uh, something that may be infeasible. Um, although, you know, whatever we can do to improve the Stevens Creek Trail is always a good idea. But in this case, I, it may not be feasible.
So how, what if we just ask staff to bring back what the possibilities are?
Yeah, that's not, that's a good idea.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I was reading the staff report to mean that we've already done the feasibility study because it says, um, that it's an unscheduled CIP to design and construct the pathway. It doesn't say anything about, um, doing the feasibility. So I assumed that was done and we determined it was feasible. Maybe Steph could comment on that.
Yeah, so I think the, the idea at the previous study session, uh, that council requires a staff to, um, look into what's to do with direct connection from the project side to the trail connection. Uh, the Stevens Creek Trail, Northside Trail Access Point Connection was another thing that we looked at, but it's on the north side of Middlefield. And that is the project which is currently unscheduled. And, you know, to understand the design and construction of it is going to be, um, looked at in future, but it has not been scheduled yet. There is a possibility, uh, I mean, uh, what, uh, Councilmember, uh, Patchal Alter said is absolutely correct. When we looked at the feasibility and working with other, uh, agencies, was found to be a major hindrance in, you know, completing something in the timeframe of the project. But council can certainly, um, direct staff to, you know, use the funds that are coming in through the community benefits to be used for a project in the neighborhood. And, you know, some of the, some of the, um, CIP projects have been mentioned in the staff report. And the Stevens Creek Trail, Northside Trail Access Point is one of them.
Thanks, I missed that it was on the north side, so thank you.
So are we comfortable with just asking staff to bring back what the options would be for the trail? Great, thank you. Um, anything else? So I need to ask Vice Mayor, I'm going to go through these items. If you can just give me a yes or no on what you support. Um, I, I, I'd say these are, I would categorize them under, well, some design and community benefits. Um, so, uh, taking off the corner tower on block B, so basically reducing, um, the, the, the stories to, uh, three stories.
Um, so I'm, I'm sorry, for, for my benefit, can, can, uh,
You're muted.
Oh, there you go. Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. Um, thank you. Uh, so for, uh, and my, my apologies, for, for my benefit, can, can staff or, or somebody put up an image that shows the location of block B? I'm on my phone and it's not easily accessible. Uh, let's see, block B.
The left corner of Moffitt and Cypress Point.
Oh, okay. Um, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the, the existing proposal. I, I feel, um, like, what is it, one hundred Moffitt, which is on a similarly prominent corner, I think has, um, allows for, for similar greater height. So I, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with the, with the current proposal.
Okay, and then, um, the fourth story, lowering it to three along Cypress Point. So for block, it's already done for block B, but the block C in the back.
Block C.
So it's the back of the project on, along Cypress Point and Highway eighty-five.
I see. Um, I'm, I'm not, without really understanding the impacts of the project, I'm not, I'm not comfortable reducing the height there. Um, and I, I don't think that was a, a concern identified from the, the planning commission. So my, my preference right now is to, to, to maintain the fourth story.
Okay, um, parking controls, so that's what we were talking about. How we, how do we get, uh, tenants to actually use the parking garage, um, provided? Uh, Councilmember Lever wants us to, um, or the applicant to work with the adult school and, and the parking issues there, um, just overall parking and enforcing parking.
Um.
Part looking at that further.
Um, I, I guess exploring it, I wouldn't, again, without, without really understanding the impact to the project, I, I, I don't feel comfortable requiring anything. I think I would be interested in knowing whether we've done that with other projects. And if we have, what, what those controls have looked like.
Okay, and staff did say we haven't. And so, um, at least for me personally, my interest was in us starting to look at that because it is, seems to have, it is an issue that has come up several times recently.
Okay, yeah, I, I think, um, may, maybe ex- exploring that and, and coming back, um, when this returns to council with, with what that would look like and, and some language around that.
Great. Um, the Stevens Creek Trail, I think you just heard the discussion, um, about bringing up options to us to next steps for some connection.
Is that, um, is that the same as the feasibility study? Or is this a different request beyond that?
So I think it's, um, it's kind of an all, all capturing, um, I'm sorry, could staff re, reiterate the response on that?
Yeah, I think there's like two things that I heard so far. I think the question that staff has is whether the, um, council supports the proposal, uh, the community benefit proposal that we have, which is regarding, you know, the applicant is proposing 1.98 million. And then, uh, the other discussion I had was regarding the, you, you know, Stevens Creek Trail Connection. In the staff report, we have mentioned that, you know, there is a, there is a CIP for Stevens Creek Trail Northside, uh, uh, Trail Access Point. That is a project which is not scheduled yet and needs to be designed and constructed. Uh, so that is one project where, you know, the community benefit funds could be, you know, council can direct that, um, staff should be, uh, the, the benefits from the, from the project should be used for the neighborhood CIPs. And this is one of the projects that has been identified.
I see, okay, that, that's helpful. Thank you. I, I, I'm, I'm, um, I'm not ready to, uh, to commit the community benefit funding. Um, I, I would want to better understand whether that's where the community would like to, to invest the lion's share of the funding. So I, I'm, I, 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 you know, Stevens Creek, uh, Trail Access is, is important and- Uh, Trail Access is is important, and I think I might ultimately support the the project, but. I'm I'm not yet ready to to in to, you know, commit funding for it from this project.
If if I may just um, explain how staff will look at all the, the council's direction is to. Um, I think we we understand there's interest in looking at other projects in the neighborhood. Um, once the economic analysis is done, I think we'll work with the applicant and and take a look. And come back with a community benefit proposal from the applicant, and then, uh, we can. Um, try to put together a recommended approach based on the kinds of projects that we're we're gonna have to work with Public Works. And the council can make the ultimate decision, but I did wanna say that. We will not be bringing specific CIP projects as part of this project. It's just the funding for potential projects, the CIP process is separate. And we're run, will be run separately, and we'll use the estimates from that to help guide us.
So, um, I I think, uh, I wanted to go through the other items and then. And I come back to the actual question, number two question about the community benefit amount, but. Um, so if I could just finish up with Vice Mayor, um, there was an interest to save more trees than what's been proposed. Would you support that or not?
I I think, so we we've we've provided language and other projects to the effect of, you know, where feasible. You know, preserve or relocate the trees, and i- if it's similar to to that direction, then. Uh, yeah, I think I think that would be, I think that would be a good addition.
Okay, great, and then a widening of the sidewalks along Moffett Boulevard.
Widening the sidewalks, um, I, um.
Right now, I think it's six feet, I believe, they're proposing and, um. The, I think, majority of council wanted them to be wider, more like along what we've done with, um. The others, uh, the one hundred Moffett project.
I see, okay, I I think, you know, to the to the extent feasible, again, this is. I I feel badly kind of, you know, jumping on 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 some some more very specific concerns. I I I'm not opposed to to widening the sidewalks and and, you know, where where we have narrow sidewalks, it's it's certainly an issue, but. I think I would want a better understanding of the impact of the project and, um, and, uh. You know, whether whether that's, that's an accommodation that that can be made without, you know, m- major, uh. Need for redesign and revision.
Okay, um, and then finally, there was a uh, interest in. Providing rent rebates for the existing tenants during the construction phase due to the. Challenges of construction that they'll have to endure.
I think the, I'm trying to think of projects that where that's that's occurred, and the the one that comes to mind is Shorebreeze where there's. Um, you know, construction, a- a- addition of units in the, you know, in an existing project. And I guess a question for staff, was there a similar accommodation made for for those tenants?
Stephanie, do you, uh, recall this?
Uh, no, I don't believe there was.
I, yeah, I I I think it's, I I feel badly saying this, I think it's, it's a nice thing, but I. I just don't feel comfortable treating this project, if if, you know, if we've, if we have a history of doing that, if that's something that we wanted. Um, you know, created a policy level, like, I'm interested, but, um, you know, I i- if we haven't, if we haven't done that for. For comparable projects, then, you know, I have a hard time requiring it in this case as well.
Okay, um, and then finally, this is about the general plan designation, um, uh. There's interest in the P District designation and then coming up with a. News, new zoning category for the thirty-six to eighty dwelling units.
Um, so maybe, maybe another question for staff, so the the the. The P District is is the zoning, right, and then the the land use designation would have to be an existing. Designation that allows for the residential capacity. Um, that the project is contemplating, is i- i- am I, am I. Understanding the terminology correctly?
Um, yes, you are, and so the staff recommendation is to create a new general plan land use designation.
I see, okay, so I I'm I'm not, in the the, these are. Gatekeepers are hard, you know, I I I think we need to really. You know, I, we haven't entertained a gatekeeper in a while, but, you know, moving forward, I think we need to be really thoughtful about how we do this, but. We haven't done that with with other gatekeepers to the extent I'm, you know, to to. You know, that that I'm familiar with, I think the the high density land use designation. Uh, is is the most important because that's the only land use designation that allows the project. Um, to proceed, if we if we want the project to proceed, um, philosophically, I I don't really like. Um, you know, site-specific, uh, zoning unless there's a compelling need to do it. Um, you know, I I think we, you know, we have conventional zoning districts for a reason and. And and, you know, I I I would be interested if if, you know, the the community is interested in modifying. Those zoning districts like we're doing with R three, I think that's that's important and good work, but I'm. You know, it's a spot, you know, there's there's a site-specific zoning feels like like. An unreasonable accommodation that.
Actually.
I'm wary of.
I don't think it would be site-specific, it's a P District, and then we would come up with a designation that would be. You could be used elsewhere, correct? It's just that time spent to create that, like, or is it?
P District, Plan Community Zoning District.
So, so the the the, we have two proposals, um, one is to move forward with the current option. And the second option that Stafford recommended, because of the concerns brought up by the EPC and other questions from the council. Um, was an option to, um, oh, keep the P zone. Um, and then, uh, do a special, a a a separate general plan designation that could run maybe thirty-six to fifty, for example. Getting close enough to the project that we could use for other sites in the future. Um, as we explained, we're contemplating the R three, and we could see breaking up the thirty-six to eighty into separate categories. Where we could do it a little bit earlier for this project rather than wait for the R three. So just wanted to clarify that that is another option we raised in response to the applicant's letter.
Oh, okay, no, thank you for the clarification, so I I think it sounds like, it's like two different. Questions within that one, um, I. I want us to be thoughtful and and holistic in our review of R three, including. Any modifications to the general plan land use designations, um, and I I just, you know. I I I can't, I I just don't feel good about. You know, thinking about that in the context of a specific project when there might be other considerations we'll have to be mindful of, so I. I don't, I I I couldn't support, um, the, you know, the the. The creation of a new land use designation because that will have implications citywide. Um, with, you know, outside of the context of R three, um, and then for the P District, yeah, I'm, I'm. I have a strong preference to use conventional zoning when we can, you know, the the. The value of the P District would be site-specific development standards, um, and. You know, I that, I I don't, I don't know what the value of that would be in this case, since we have. A s- a a development, you know, permit that's being proposed, we we have the design of the project. And since, sorry, go ahead.
I can, um, respond to that, we, I if I recall, we used the P District when we were going through the general plan. Amendments and precise, I don't, well, we didn't get to the precise plan, but we were, because we didn't wanna hold up projects until we finished the general plan update. The with the projects that came in during that time, we had assigned them a T P District. And then, once we came up with a zoning category, we assigned that category to that that project. So that's how I'm envisioning this to be similar, and, you know, we've talked about Moffett precise plan and whatnot too, so. Given that there might be some, you know, more holistic, uh, uh, look, look at this area. That's how I would see the P District happening, so it'd be just like a temporary placeholder. Until we come up with a category that works for the site.
So, um, so the the new category would be some version of R three, then?
It sounds like it could be.
Ah, I. That, I I I, if if. The, you know, I did, it's 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 difficult for me because it feels. Well, we don't know what the development standards for the new R three district or districts will be. Um, you know, and I think the 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 value, be- because we have a a project, I I don't. Really see a lot of value in designing development standards just for this one project and. You know, in in anticipation of R three, because we may want to do something very different with R three. Um, and and the the the, I think, you know, if the underlying intent is to. Have a protection against the possibility of, for instance, a density bonus. Um, the the density bonus would be applied on top of the general plan land use designation and and not the zoning. And I think that's, you know, it, whi- which which is why something like the, you know, condition of approval. Or a narrowly scoped, you know, DA or something, I think would would better address that that particular concern. Um, like, I I guess, you know, I I just don't, I don't feel. Um, it's it's really hard for me to justify creating a a set of development standards specifically for this project. Particularly if we don't have a a full understanding of what the development standards for the new R three. Districts will be, um, it just, it feels, it feels a little speculative, and I I I just, I just don't feel comfortable. Doing that.
Okay.
I think council member, we we just, the staff recommendation was trying to balance support for the project, not waiting and moving forward. And when we recommended this new general plan designation, um, we, and at staff level, have been discussing this for a while. And while you're right that the R three, we don't exactly know where we're gonna land. I think breaking it up into three categories, right, thirty-six to fifty, fifty-one to sixty-five, sixty-six to eighty. Could could be the beginning of of an approach even for the R three. Now, we may end up with something different, and that's why we're recommending that. We could move forward with this, so it would address both the EPC and some of the council members' concerns, but not make the project wait for R three. Um, so again, it's a, it's a middle ground and will allow us to use the existing EIR. Create a planning focus alternative, which would create a new cat designation.
Um, I I wish we had had the benefit of the R three study session prior to this discussion. Um, just because I, you know, we we, we may wanna do something different. You know, the council may elect not to adopt the R three changes in the end. Um, and I just, I I I think. You know, I I don't have a problem with the existing development standards, I think, you know, the the. The, if if we were just doing a general plan amendment and rezoning without a project, I wouldn't support. I couldn't justify that, but but because we have a project that that appears to be, you know, that was supported by the by the Planning Commission, and I think. It sounds like, you know, there's 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 comfort with, you know, with with the council right now. Um, I I I don't see a lot of value add in in the, you know, in a P District, you know, I think. We have a P District, in my mind, you know, w- we need to create development standards for a particular project or parcel. You know, because there's some special reason to do so, and in this case, it's hard for me to. To think of what that, of what that special reason might be. Uh, so I I I have a a preference to just use the existing development standards, and. If we don't like the project, we don't have to approve the project, now that's that's perfectly okay, um, but. You know, I I think we we have a project that's pretty well-defined and 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 fairly well-designed at this point, and I. I'm not, I'm not sure what the the value add of of a P District would be in this case.
Hello, I could just respond, I would just remind, um, folks that, you know, we had approved the Summer Hill Project in the Wisman. Uh, East Wisman area, and that's not moving forward, so that was being designed and spent many years going through the process, and it's not happening. And the question is, you know, what's gonna come there, so that's the issue is, you know, do we want to contain it to the. Fifty or fifty-two or so units per acre, or are we, you know, willing to risk letting it go to eighty units per acre? So, and it was a, we had three for the P District, so you would have been the tiebreaker if I smear, so. But it sounds like you wanna stick with it, so that's, um, so it's a three-three tie, so that will fail. So I think, um, if I heard, then I I tried to ca- ca- take count. I got, um, majority support for the parking controls, the Stevens Creek Trail, saving more trees. The Moffett sidewalk, rent reduction, and then not a majority on taking off the corner tower. And reducing the fourth story and Block C in the P District zoning. Is that clear, is that, and I actually, I know Councilmember Michelle Walter, you mentioned the sound wall, is there interest in that? I'd say, I think that's a quite a project, so, um.
I don't, I don't remember mentioning a sound wall, I'm sorry.
Someone had talked about sound mitigation.
Yeah, I I, um, sorry, uh, a resident had, and I. Added that as possibly exploring, you know, sound mitigation because that was important to a lot of residents.
Okay.
But I think it was just me who brought it up.
And this councilmember, Labor, did you wanna support that or?
Just, just a clarifying question, I'm wondering from staff, is there information that's already been developed? That we're precluding by not, uh, going in the direction of the P District. That that would provide a a benefit or a a protection for the community?
I I think the only option we saw, um, to support moving forward with the current project. But yet keeping the density to what the project is, is doing a P District, cuz we don't currently have a zone. That's limited to fifty-ish units to the acre, the R four goes up to eighty. Um, and so keeping it a P zone would, yes, um, keep the standards specific to the project. But that's no different from the current zoning for the site, which is P. Um, we're only proposing then to revise the general plan designation to create a new one. That goes only up to fifty units, as opposed to the only one we have, which goes all the way up to eighty. The range really doesn't mean much, given new state laws, we have to look at the highest fifty, and then we've got eighty, so.
And so, Col- uh, Vice Mayor, um, expressed a a general support for. Uh, the project is presented, and so to be able to keep it as presented, we would need to do. Um, the P District to be able to preclude going up to. Eighty units, which is clearly something that I I think the neighborhood has expressed a strong preference to not move in the direction of.
Correct, yes.
Uh, okay, well, i- if there's a way to do so, I'd like to really, um, urge the Vice Mayor to, um. Uh, come along on on getting more information back on that, or some more options, so that we at least have the option. Uh, to protect the community from something that's not expected and and probably not desired.
Actually, Councilmember Labor, if you would support the P District study, then we would actually have a majority to.
Yes, I do support it.
Okay, great, so we then we have a majority, so, uh. Concludes, I believe that concludes all. Concludes, I believe that concludes all the items. Thank you for your patience. I know we went way over, but I think it was a good discussion, so. Um, with that, I will close the study session and turn it back to the mayor. We may want to take a break beforehand. Thanks.
Councilwoman Abbe Koga.
Yes.
If I may, I think it would be good to take the break now, and then the mayor can rejoin, and then we can get back to the regular meeting.
Okay, sounds good then. About ten minutes, so if we can rejoin at seven fifty, that would be great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll move on to item number two, which is roll call. We'll have the interim city clerk, Bonja London, take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abby Koga.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Leiber.
Here.
Councilmember Matta Check.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamay.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll move on to item three, which is presentations. So we'll move on to item three point one, which is our proclamation and recognition of the Lunar New Year. So we had, um, asked our Visual Arts Committee member, Two Two Thompson, to join us to receive this proclamation. I'm not sure if she's still with us. Is she? Okay, great. So maybe we can move Ms. Thompson over. Wonderful, thanks so much. And I'll just, uh, read our City of Mountain View proclamation. So whereas today, we commemorate the Lunar New Year and join families in California, Asia, and around the world in welcoming the Year of the Ox. And whereas the Lunar New Year predominantly celebrated by millions of Asian and Pacific Islander Californians. Including people of Chinese, Korean, Singaporean, and Vietnamese heritage, among others, in a time of renewal and joy. On this special day, families gather to celebrate and prepare for the arrival of a new year of good health and prosperity. Across the state, parade, community events, and family meals illustrate the rich cultural history and diversity that define California. And whereas, as we look forward to a joyous new year, we proudly reflect on the contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Californians. Who literally built California. From America's first transcontinental railroad, to the farms and small businesses foundational to our state's economy. We also recognize that discriminatory laws, xenophobic policies, and mis-treatments suffered by Asian and Pacific Islander Californians. Are a blight on our state's history. And whereas today, in rejecting past prejudice and embracing inclusion. Let us join our Asian and Pacific Islander friends and neighbors in celebration. We also encourage California schools to take time to educate our students about the traditions of the Lunar New Year. And past and present contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander community in our state. And whereas, as the door to the Year of the Ox opens, we wish good fortune, health, and happiness to all who celebrate. Now therefore, I, Ellen Kamay, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council. Do hereby proclaim today as Lunar New Year. Wonderful. Thanks, everyone. Two Two, did you want to, um, say any words or tell us a little bit about Lunar New Year?
Oh, thanks for, thanks for inviting me. Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I just felt, um, very warm, and, uh, the city is making efforts to recognize such a culture. Uh, importance, culture holiday. And, you know, me being Chinese myself, this is one of the biggest holidays, and, uh, so glad we're doing it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Thompson, and thank you so much for your service to the City of Mountain View on the Visual Arts Committee. We really appreciate it, and thank you for waiting for the, for, uh, the proclamation. We'll make sure.
Always great pleasure, was great pleasure, and I, you know, learned something about the project.
Yes, you too. Great, well, thank you so much.
Yeah, Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Everyone.
Hi, thank you. Great, so we'll move on to item three point two, which is our COVID nineteen update by our city manager, Kimber McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor Kamay, I'm going to share my screen now. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I am here tonight to present the latest COVID nineteen update, so. What I'm going to focus on is similar to what I focused on in the last, um, couple meetings, and. Really talk about vaccines and where we're at right now as a county. So, um, this is the latest snapshot countywide as of today, so there's a little over a hundred and nine thousand cases right now. You can see that the new case count was two hundred and thirty-nine cases today. So, the good news is that this case count is going down dramatically, which I'll show you in a slide and a couple, couple slides. Um, in Mountain View, we are also seeing our daily case count going down, so as of yesterday. So far, we have around, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred, uh, positive cases right now. Um, this is a slide that shows the dashboard of the, uh, seven-day rolling average of the new cases. So you can see the spike, I mentioned this last time, at, um, the mid to end point of January, where there was an average of around. Twenty-two fifty-six cases, which, you know, per day, that was a really, really large number. And you can see on the right side of the screen now that now we're down to two hundred and seventy-four cases for the rolling average, so. It does continue to hover around that number, and. We're hoping that over the next few weeks, um, and certainly over the next couple of months, as more people get vaccinated. And they're fully vaccinated, that this number will start to go down further. So this is the chart that shows right now where all the counties are at, and all the tiers, I believe we're all familiar with this. In Santa Clara County, we are still currently in the purple tier. Um, but there is a hope on the horizon that if our numbers continue to stay down. That it is likely that we.
that it is likely that we could be in the red tier potentially next week. So we just found out today that there are two Bay Area counties that moved into the red tier today. So San Mateo County and Marin County moved into the red tier. And essentially, what moving to the red tier means is that there are more business sector activities that are allowed to open. So for example, there is some indoor dining that is allowed at this point. I believe it's around 25% indoor capacity. And then there are some other things like gyms, being able to be open with certain restrictions. So moving into that tier is certainly a good sign. So we are hopeful that we have potential to do that within the next week or two. In terms of vaccines and getting a vaccine appointment, SCCFreeVax.org is the website that anyone can go to to get their vaccine appointment. So right now, the current eligibility is anyone in Phase 1A and 1B. So essentially, healthcare workers, long-term care facilities, and anyone over the age of 65. And then as of February 28th, it's also been extended to workers in certain categories. So teachers, childcare workers, agriculture, food supply workers, so certain essential workers, and also emergency services workers will be able to start getting vaccinated on the 28th. In Santa Clara County, folks can make an appointment. Even if the vaccine itself doesn't start till the 28th, they can make an appointment right now for those, for those vaccines. So we encourage everyone to go to SCCFreeVax.org if they fall into one of those categories. Or you can call the Valley Connection Call Center, which will help people facilitate the online appointment setting. That is 408-970-2000. In terms of what's happening here in Mountain View at our community center. So we have a no wrong door policy in the county where you can go to any vaccination site for anyone eligible in those categories that I just mentioned. So it is appointment only, as I mentioned, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. And we have had daily vaccinations hover around the 800 range, so around 800 per day. They have gone up to almost 900 per day, and the goal is to eventually ramp up to around 1,000 per day. So since we've been open, just since the end of January, we've done 11,377 vaccines that have been administered there. We've also tried to make some adjustments with the flow of traffic, with the line flow. We've learned a lot over the last several weeks, and we have increased more city staff time there to really help that line management flow and parking. So now the wait time is averaging around 30 minutes. And I know that folks have give, been giving us feedback and information that they're really appreciative of how the site is being operated. And so I'm very appreciative of staff in helping facilitate this with the county medical provider there. So this is a dashboard on where we're at with vaccines countywide. So the blue color is how many doses, the first dose of the vaccine that have been given. So so far, there's been 266,000 first doses countywide. And that is about 16 and a half percent of county residents that have received that first dose. The green in this chart here shows people that have received that second dose. So 105,000, about 106,000 have received that second dose and have completed vaccination. So that's about 6.6% countywide. So you can see that the chart is trending on, on an upward slant, so they are ramping up efforts. But I mentioned this last time, and I'll mention it again. The logistics are there in that there are sites available countywide. Obviously, I just talked about our site here in Mountain View. So the issue right now is not will to do it, the issue is still supply. So as supply ramps up and as the state gets more doses, which are then given to the county and the different medical providers, we're hopeful that these numbers will continue to increase and ramp up more and more. So testing is also very important. So as we're vaccinating, folks, we are still testing. So right now, we've tested about 14,500 tests since midsummer at our city facilities. And just this year alone, we've had about 2,400 tests. You can go to SCCFreeTest.org to schedule a test. You can also go to El Camino Hospital for ongoing appointments, Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 7:00. And we do have three upcoming testing opportunities at our Center for the Performing Arts. Those are on March 2nd, March 11th, and March 16th. So I encourage you to go to that website if you need to be tested. Then pivoting to a couple of updates on our programs that the council has authorized to, to help the community, not just small businesses, but also community members in need. Our small business grant program closed, and we did receive 143 applications so far. So right now, staff is reviewing all of those applications, making sure that folks are eligible. They had to meet certain criteria to apply, and then we're also making sure that people have valid business license and, and just some technical details like that. But once the eligibility is determined by staff, there's going to be a lottery held via Zoom in early March. So we will put information out about that date and those specifics once we have those details. For the rent relief program, right now, the average assistance still continues to be around that 2,200 a month. We have a little over 1,800 checks cut, and we've expended almost $4 million for this program. So there does continue to be a great need for this program, and CSA is moving through the applications as, as fast as they can. I also wanted to give an update about Project Home Key. So we do continue to make progress on this project. We have had to move the, the implementation out a little further. So right now, we've experienced delays due to the rain that has happened. We've had some construction delays due to some unforeseen soil and different site condition delays. And interesting, interestingly enough, our modular units are actually coming from Austin, Texas. So we have been impacted by the different power, power outages in Texas and getting those units to us. So we're anticipating now that the modular units will be installed in March and hopefully the first couple of weeks in March. And then obviously, then, right after that, in April, is when we expect to have the completion for that. I also wanted to mention that the City of Palo Alto opened its first safe parking lot for 12 vehicles. So obviously, here in Mountain View, we have five safe parking lots. But it is great that our regional neighboring city also opened a safe parking lot. I also wanted to let the community know that right now, we do have two current ongoing advisory board recruitments. So our rental housing committee and our public safety advisory board recruitments are underway right now. And the deadline to apply for those two boards is this Friday, February 26th. Then you can go to our website and learn more information about how to apply. And then we also have our city strategic roadmap, community workshops coming up. So just this Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00, that's actually AM. I hope that no one shows up at 9:00 p.m. on a Saturday night. But this is a great opportunity to have the community provide input on our city's highest priorities and give their feedback about the vision for Mountain View. And it will really help shape our strategic plan. So I encourage members of the community to go to mountainview.gov/strategicroadmap to sign up for one of those sessions. And we will have other sessions beyond these two. We'll have them in Spanish, Mandarin, and Russian. We'll also have a small business community workshop, so we will be announcing further workshops beyond just these two. Then I also, as I do normally, wanted to highlight different city staff that have been working so hard over the pandemic and over these last few months. And tonight, I'd like to highlight our building and fire inspection team. So Ryan, Raquel, and Tony, in left to right order is who you see here, working hard. And I thought that it would be interesting for you all to know just how much is actually going on in the city during COVID. So the, the target inspection number that the department set at the beginning of the year, just for inspections alone, was 11,500. And so far today, they have performed over 25,000 inspections. So again, the target was 11,500. They're already at over 25,000 inspections, and we still have a few months to go this fiscal year. Our plan checks and, plan checks and permits is the same. We've performed almost 2,000 plan checks, and we've issued around 3,500 permits. So it is a very, very busy division. We also have made the pivot to a lot more efficient and online operations. So right now, we have a pilot virtual inspection program. So we're studying the viability of doing virtual inspections for really simple permits for one to two family dwellings. And if that pilot is successful, we're going to launch it with further notification to the community via our website. And we also have our digital submittal and plan check right now via electronic methods. And we have next day inspections available if a request is received by 3:00 p.m. the prior business day. So I do want to thank our entire building and fire inspection team for everything they've been doing and just highlight a little bit of the work that they've been undertaking these last many months. Then lastly, I want to remind the public that we do have a weekly briefing that goes out. You can text 22828, excuse me, MVCOVID to 22828 to receive that briefing every Friday. Get the latest information on COVID and other things that are happening in the city. So with that, Mayor, I will close and remind everyone to mask up and be, please stay safe and healthy, and I'm open for any questions. Great, thank you so much, City Manager McCarthy. Do any council members have questions about her presentation? All right, so seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. So if any member of the public on the line would like to comment, please feel to, feel free to raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. And the interim city clerk will display the timer on the screen. I know we're running a bit behind, so why don't we just set it to two minutes? And I, I see Mr. England's hand. So let me know when you're ready, Ms. Bonderlanden.
Mr. Jensen is helping with the timer, and he will get going very soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I only need two minutes, so this is good. So I had my first vaccination yesterday, so yay on that. But when I set up the second appointment, they told me I have to go to Levi's Stadium because they don't have inventory at the community center. That seems unfortunate to me, and I don't really understand it. Because if they have the inventory at the stadium, why not just split off some of that and get it down here to Mountain View? Don't make people drive over to the stadium. And that also puts people in close proximity, you know, why not split it up? So I've sent the message or the question over to the board of supervisors to see if they can respond to it. But because this is being done in Mountain View, there might be some city discussion involved too. So that's why I'm raising it here. Maybe the city manager can find out. So I just wanted to raise that. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Mr. England. Does anyone else have any public comment? Okay. Sure, okay. Mr.?
Good evening, Mayor Kamay and council members. I'm Gita Dev with the Sierra Club. I had the privilege of, of joining Access Mountain View's meeting on the Bicycle Plan Network for Mountain View, which is a very exciting plan and very well thought out. I remember it coming to council on the priority list that they were, criteria they were going to use. The one thing I did want to point out, and I did point it out, and several people brought it up, was something I'd like to bring to the attention of council. And that is that pedestrians are very difficult to get on B-Packs. And pedestrians' needs very often don't get reflected in bicycle and pedestrian masterplans. It tends to be just about intersection design. What's really missing is the fact that if you're a pedestrian, you really need a green street with shade trees and good sidewalks and a connected.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dev, what, where, this is for public comment on the COVID-19 update?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No problem. I wasn't sure, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were going to be talking about mobility, like access, access to the, to our site, our vaccination site, so.
I'm so sorry.
No problem. So we're, we're still on.
I withdraw.
Okay.
Thank.
No problem. So I just want to clarify, I see two other hands in the queue. So we're still on item 3.2, which is the COVID-19 update from our city manager. So we're taking public comment on the COVID-19 update. Okay. Ms. Lynn, do you have comments on?
Yeah, yeah, this will be quick. I, I just wanted to echo what City Manager McCarthy said about city staff. Like, thank you so much for all your efforts these past few, well, I guess it's now year. Now, you know, I, I don't know if we can give a gold star or do something, but I really appreciate that, all the care and effort that city staff have shown in service to community. So thank you very much. I know maybe you get a lot of complaints and some from me, but definitely really appreciate your, all of your thoughtfulness and hard work and effort in service to us. Thanks.
Great, thanks so much. So I don't see any other hands, so I think we can bring this back and close this item and move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on an item on the consent calendar? If so, please feel to raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. I think we'll stay with the two minutes. All right, I'm not seeing any hands, so I will bring it back to the council for a motion. Councilmember Madison.
Thank you. I will move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shaw Walter.
I would just like to, I, I second it, but I would also like to acknowledge the, the report that we got on the female firefighters and how we have one of the, the highest percentage in the county. And that's because we have taken really explicit steps to increase the number of females in our firefighting department and to, and to make their lives better when they're there by providing things like better sleeping quarters. So I just want to send out a kudos to the female firefighters and, and the whole department for, for doing that and the recognition that we've gotten in the grand jury report.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Shaw Walter. And we also provide free feminine hygiene products for our city employees as well. So I've heard positive feedback from those in our public safety that that's appreciated as well. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I almost forgot. I have to recuse myself from the Visual Arts Committee appointment. And I just wanted to thank you and councilmember Abi Koga for, for taking on the, the interviews and, and, and that process for the card. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So we had a motion to approve the consent calendar from councilmember Maticek with a second from councilmember Shaw Walter. And Vice Mayor Ramirez will be abstaining from, which, what item number is that? Four? 4.5? Okay, great. 4.5. So we'll do a roll call. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilmember Abi Koga.
I'm sorry if you didn't hear me the first time.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Councilmember Hicks? Yes. Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Great, thank you so much. So we'll move on to item five, which is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom and press star nine on the phone. And we will fix the timer um, to three minutes since this is our public, or this is our oral communication section. And we will move to Miss Dev.
Thank you once again, Mayor Kame. I will not take three minutes. Um, I simply wanted to add to what I'd already said about the B-Pack that we have looked at the bicycle master plan and there will be a pedestrian bicycle, a pedestrian master plan coming up. However, one of the things that was raised by several people was the fact that trees are sometimes being removed in order to get bicycle lanes along many streets. And sidewalks are sometimes being impacted by signage for the bicycle lanes and so forth. So it's not uh, very conducive to pedestrians to walk. The thing that we would just like to bring up is that during COVID, it came out very clearly that people will walk and they love to walk for exercise. Um, for their kids, to walk with their kids, if they have slow, safe streets. And so we really want to advocate for a connected, slow, safe network through Mountain View. And that is something we have mentioned to the staff and we, I just wanted to bring it to council's attention. That a connected, slow, safe network where cars go really slowly and pedestrians and bicyclists have top priority is a kind of network that many cities are putting in. Uh, many large cities and small cities. Um, the safety is the most important criteria. And having beautiful shade trees is really critical if you're walking. Uh, there are many other advantages to an urban forest, of course, but I just wanted to bring this one item up. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Shawnee Kleinhouse?
Good evening, Mayor Kame, City Council. This is Shawnee Kleinhouse from Santa Clara Valley, Old Bond Society. I started writing a letter to you all about why birds are important and why urban biodiversity and rewilding is important. I think it ties with what Gita just said about trees. But I'll read you just a little bit of it, and then I'll send you the letter later. Uh, during your retreat and the city goal setting into the strategic plan process, council members expressed their appreciation of hearing birds. And there was a suggestion that believability, including aspects of bringing infrastructure, urban forests, pollinator corridors, and biodiversity could be set aside as a goal by itself with associated priorities. And I thought that was a really good idea, and here is why. Worldwide, the loss of biodiversity has been devastating, and scientists now believe that we're in the midst of mass extinction, similar to what happened about sixty-five million years ago when fifty percent of all plant and animal species disappeared from our planet. In Mountain View, mostly in North Bay Shore, there are breeding populations of twenty plant and wildlife species that are listed as endangered, threatened, or species of special concern. The most charismatic of the of these is obviously the boring owls, uh, the San Francisco Common Yellow-throated Black Skimmers, White-throated Kites, even Congan, Congan Tarplant. But some species have been extirpated from shoreline in the past twenty years. The California Quail are state bird is one of them. And some migratory birds are already suffering population decline, even common ones that we find in every backyard in the area. And some uh, local species are at the brink of extirpation. The boring owl is one of them. The migratory monarch butterfly is another. So for many species, we don't have population trails too. And birds and biodiversity are important to people, to their happiness. There is a, using data from the twenty-twelve European Quality of Life Survey to study connection between biodiversity and life satisfaction. Um, in Europe, they studied more than twenty-six thousand people from twenty-six countries. And they showed that an additional ten percent in bird species increased life satisfaction as much as a comparable increase in income. There are other studies that show that happiness and life satisfaction are linked to biodiversity, nature, preserving parks, in open spaces, and in people's everyday life. So I'm gonna write a little more on this and send you my letter, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Tim McKenzie?
Hi, uh, my name's Tim McKenzie. I use he/him pronouns. I've been a resident of the Montaloma neighborhood since two thousand fifteen. Um, I'm the chair of the Silicon Valley chapter of the uh, the chair of the Labor Working Group of the Silicon Valley Chapter of uh, the Democratic Socialists of America. And uh, in that capacity, I just spoke in front of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Clara County who approved a hazard pay ordinance uh, that had passed in San Jose, and then it moved up to the Board of Supervisors. Um, and now that they've passed it, they're planning on sending it out to the cities um, i- in the county. And given that we are there, I hope that uh, Mountain View can take a proactive step, and I just wanted to put that on your radar. Uh, thank you for the pass.
Thank you. Bee Hanson?
Hello. Well, I just wanted to uh, make a couple of comments. Uh, in the last couple of days, I've heard from several of my uh, senior friends in Santiago Villa that they've received their ninety-day notifications of rent increase. Uh, as expected, uh, the park owner added a little paragraph giving himself credit for holding rent increases to two point nine percent, which is the amount that CSFR has approved for apartment dwellers. Uh, that was expected, but what I did find surprising was another paragraph that claimed that the recent lawsuit our neighbors lost against the Rental Housing Committee had concluded in a decision by the Superior Court of California that mobile home residents are not going to be covered by rent control. Uh, he knows that this is just a falsehood. Um, what the the Superior Court decided was that the Rental Housing Committee has the discretion to decide, uh, and still has the discretion to reverse their vote if they want to. Uh, he deliberately lied basically to residents. Uh, and this is not surprising again because of the the letter that he sent to all residents uh, recently about rent increases and what the wonderful things that he was offering, which are all bogus. Uh, it it's it's really, it's unconscionable that it that this man is allowed to to rule over so many people uh, who are, many of whom are quite defenseless. Um, this is also the landlord who has refused to cooperate with the city government in providing the information that the the city staff requested. Uh, and it will continue to withhold information as long as you allow him to. Uh, so what I'd like to ask you is for, to get together in a joint session with the Rental Housing Committee and try to expedite uh, what many of you have said that you were interested in doing, helping us to get our rent stabilized. Uh, and um, I guess I'll I'll just leave it at that. Um, I would really appreciate if you would consider putting that on your agenda by at least September. Thank you. Yield my time.
Thank you. Alexandra Brown?
Hey, oh, hi. Hey, uh, first things first, I fully echo and support everything that Bee said. I probably should have pointed this out during the consent calendar, but the work plan status update doesn't address the mobile home protections, which uh, was a work plan item that was approved three years ago? Two years ago. Now, uh, as a member of the Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance, I'd like to formally and publicly request that you pick this issue back up. After last January study session, we were told that we had to wait for the outcome of Measure D. And after Measure D failed to pass, we had to wait for the appeal to wind its way through the courts. And now the appeal's concluded, we as an organization feel that the city council and the Rental Housing Committee should work together to find a solution to finally provide safety and security for those of us in Mountain View six mobile and manufactured home communities. I would love to see the results of a joint session with all twelve and maybe soon to be thirteen of you, and maybe me. Uh, thanks.
Thank you. So we don't see any other hands in the attendee box. Um, so we'll uh, close uh, oral communications and bring it back to the council for item six, which is a public hearing. We'll move on to item six point one, um, which will be uh, sixteen-hundred Amphitheater Parkway and two thousand North Shoreline Boulevard project modifications. So I will turn it first over to city staff and then ask if the uh, applicant would like to give a presentation. Perhaps we need to move some city staff. Alright, here we go. Ms. Horan, can you hear us? There we go, yep.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Just one moment while I open up my screen. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Erin Heran, and I will be presenting this item along with Stephanie Williams, the Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator. Um, tonight's item is for a request to modify two previously approved planned community permits at sixteen-hundred Amphitheater Parkway and two thousand North Shoreline Boulevard to construct site modifications, including relocating interior public access to the exterior of the campuses. The project site consists of one parcel at sixteen-hundred Amphitheater Parkway, the Google Plex currently developed with four office buildings and two parcels at two thousand North Shoreline Boulevard Charleston East, currently under construction with a new office building. The two sites are located in the block between Permanent Creek, North Shoreline Boulevard, Amphitheater Parkway, and Charleston Road. Charleston Park, which is a public city park, sits in the middle between the two sites. Both sites are owned by the city and leased to Google. The original approvals for the office developments were in nineteen ninety-five for sixteen-hundred Amphitheater, which included an F A R bonus with the inclusion of public access through the site. In twenty seventeen, Charleston East was approved with public access through the building. Google has now been experiencing recent security concerns to their campuses, which has prompted the request for modifications to relocate the interior public access, the green loop path to the exterior of the campus. Staff has worked with the applicant to provide an equal alternative to achieve the applicant's security concerns as well as maintain public access and engagement, which will be reviewed on the next slides. The proposed project at sixteen-hundred Amphitheater includes relocating the interior public access, as you'll see on the left slide, to an exterior green loop path shown in the proposed slide along Charleston Road. The path will replace the existing sidewalk, include a new public plaza with scheduled programming, new artistic security fencing around the main entrances, add a park knoll and V I P entrance on the east entrance, and will remove thirty-one heritage trees, including mostly non-native redwood trees, replacing with a total of a hundred and seventy-seven new trees. Here are some views of the proposed modifications, including the artistic fencing on the east and west entries and the new public, public plaza with seating and food trucks. Now, this is for Charleston East, which was approved with an east-west public pathway and retail and cafe uses along the internal path with public entrances along the eastern and western building facades. The project, the project now proposes to not allow public access through the center of the building, remove the public access point from the eastern side, but still remain as an employee access point, and then consolidate the publicly accessible retail and cafe uses on the western side of the building and maintain the public access entry and exit point on the western facade. Part of this consolidation of publicly accessible space is the introduction of a neighborhood partnership center, which can be used by community members or small businesses for community gatherings um, or small businesses for community gathering space by reservation. On January twenty-seventh, the zoning administrator held a public hearing. No members of the public spoke on the item. The projects were recommended with conditional approval to the city council. A condition is included for staff to work with the applicant on the final design of the security fencing, V I P entrance, and public plaza. In conclusion, staff has worked with the applicant to address the campus security concerns while also maintaining public access and engagement. Staff recommends the council adopt the resolutions to approve the modifications to both project sites as well as to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the disposition and development agreement for sixteen-hundred Amphitheater Parkway. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions. I know the applicant will also have a presentation.
Great, thank you so much. So I think at this time, uh, we'll have the applicant presentation, so if you don't mind, um, taking your screen off so we can have the applicant share their screen. And I believe it will be speaking on behalf of Google will be Michael Timeoff, Adam Dell, and Chris Allin.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Kame, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and council members. My name is uh, Michael Timeoff. I'm Google's District Development Director for Mountain View. And as was mentioned, I'm joined tonight by Adam Dell and Chris Allin, both development executives on our real estate team, and we're here to make a presentation and answer any questions that you may have on the design enhancement projects before you. I'm going to show my screen here momentarily. And hopefully you all can see my screen now.
Yes, we see your screen.
Great, excellent. So, thank you, Erin, for your presentation, and um, first just a note of appreciation and acknowledgement of the collaboration with staff and for all of the feedback and input um, that you all have provided to to make these better projects. The goal of these two design enhancement projects is to improve on the public's experience visiting our campuses in North Bay Shore while ensuring the safety and security of our employees, Google visitors, and the general public. We're confident that our design balances these goals by expanding upon our existing, in the case of Google Plex, and proposed in the case of Charleston East, welcoming of the public. Again, we appreciate all of the input and collaboration with staff to make these projects better. And we're here tonight requesting your approval to allow us to move forward on these very important projects. This slide shows an overview of the combined Charleston East and Google Plex projects, which each adjoin the city's Charleston Park. Existing paths in the park would continue to be open to the public, providing connectivity between the two campuses. The yellow lines indicate publicly accessible paths that vary in size, type, and use. And the blue zones indicate the major public gathering areas around the two projects. These are in addition to the city's Charleston Park and the Permanent Creek Trail to the west. The proposed improvements will also enhance access and connectivity with these existing publicly accessible areas, in particular for pedestrians and bicyclists. Google also recently funded and completed both the Charleston Corridor Phase One project and a refresh of the city's Charleston Park, which I'll highlight in a minute. Both of these projects are great examples of the continued collaboration between the city of Mountain View and Google, and we truly appreciate the opportunity to continue to collaborate with the city on making North Bay Shore a more welcoming experience for all. Briefly, on Charleston Park, um, as I mentioned, we recently completed this project on behalf of the city um, and are very proud of the design um, and welcoming visitors um, to this very important park. And while we will be holding a groundbreaking uh, celebration here shortly, it will, it will be virtual um, due to the pandemic, but we did want to share tonight with you a few pictures of this project, which further enhances the public's experience when visiting our campuses and welcomes people to enjoy the many public open spaces throughout. and welcomes people to enjoy the many public open spaces throughout North Bay Shore. This is a site plan of Google Plex showing the proposed design enhancements. These include secure, securing the four entrances into the main courtyard at the north, south, east, and west sides of the buildings. It is important to note that we are not proposing to fence the perimeter of the site, only these four main access points into the courtyard. This also shows a new public plaza that is being proposed on the south side of what we call Building Forty-three along Charleston Corridor and is intended to be the key public-facing amenity, which I will again highlight in more detail in a couple of minutes. Up to the right-hand, uh, edge of the, the image, you'll, you'll see the park knoll, which is meant to provide a public connection between Charleston Park and the in, east entrance of Google Plex. And this is replacing a vehicular driveway and drug, and, uh, Google bus drop-off zone that's there today. And then finally, a multi-use trail along Charleston will allow the public to connect both Permanente Creek and a new greenway leading up to the park mall. So take a minute just to talk about the, uh, security fencing, um, which we've designed, uh, together in collaboration with an international artist named Emmanuel Moreau. Uh, the sculpture design of this proposed security fencing is based on the number Google Plex, which is ten to the one-hundredth power. The design is proposed at both the east and west entries into the courtyard and is made of ten by ten panels using the number zero, which mimics the base number Google Plex. Each panel will be a different color for a total of one hundred individual colors. This is a view of one of the key public enhancements, which is a redesign of an underutilized driveway and bus loading zone I mentioned earlier, and creates a meadow of native plants, providing seasonal color and new habitat for birds, pollinators, and other wildlife, while also providing new train, tree plantings and seedings for people to rest adjacent to Charleston Park. This is a close-up view of the security fence fencing at the east entry, which is again been intentionally designed as a functional yet sculptural element that serves to meet our security requirements. The Google Plex two-point-O plaza will provide a number of interactive pop-up experiences such as yoga classes, art exhibits, bike clinics, speakers, and performances. Visitors will be able to grab a cup of coffee or something to eat and get visitor information at a kiosk. There will be a feature wall with interactive art at the north end of the plaza that will be designed to function as a quirky and eye-catching photo opportunity background for visitors. The plaza also has copious seating, uh, providing a place to rest, take a break, meet with friends, and enjoy the Google atmosphere for both the general public and visitors coming to our campus. By retention zones and tree plantings within the plaza, connect back to the native California plant palette and provide a buffer to the busy Charleston Road. At the west entry, looking east from the Alza Trail connection towards the Google Plex campus. Again, the artistic fencing both addresses our aesthetic objectives while providing the functional security needs for the Google Plex. At Charleston East, the design modifications we are proposing, uh, would, would be to remove the originally proposed weekly access through the walkway through the center of the building and replace it with a new neighborhood partnership center, public store, and public cafe that would be accessible from the exterior of the building. These facilities will be open seven days a week, except on public holidays and other Google holidays. And important to note that the original proposal for the Green Loop Trail that went through the middle of the building, public access was limited to Monday through Friday from nine to five P M. So we think this expanded offering, both in terms of hours and footprint, uh, really enhance, enhances the visitor experience. This shows in a little bit more detail the ten thousand square feet of public retail and cafe. The retail store will be a hardware-focused store selling Google products. It will also sell Google branded merchandise to the public as well. We anticipate that the retail store will also provide both experiential and interactive activities for the public, highlighting some of our recent work in technology services and products. The cafe will be constructed and operated by Google in partnership with a vendor and offer, offering, uh, that will mirror Google's food program to ensure vibrant and healthy offerings, including hot, cold, and beverage stations. The cafe will be connected to the Neighborhood Partnership Center to the south. As was mentioned by staff, uh, the three thousand six hundred square foot Neighborhood Partnership Center is a new offering. Um, and we worked very closely with staff on the programming, uh, for this as well as the location. Our original proposal actually had this located off of the Green Loop and, uh, working with staff decided that consolidating this publicly facing use with the retail and the cafe made, made a lot of sense. And so we were able to accommodate that change. So the Neighborhood Partnership Center is anticipated to provide a cultural hub, visitor center experiences, and a platform for community events and programming. There are three components of the Neighborhood Partnership Center, which include a welcoming station, visitor center and lounge area, a flexible pop-up space for small businesses and community organizations, and an event space projected to accommodate community groups of up to a hundred people. We have a similar community meeting space that we currently operate in San Francisco, and we will work with our events team to establish a process for community organizations to schedule times to hold public meetings and events. And again, at the suggestion of staff, we're happy to be able to accommodate an event program that would be hosted by Google, and we would curate a number of public-facing events approximately twelve times a year in this space. As I mentioned, um, all three of these public-facing amenities will have direct exterior access, and there will be outdoor seating areas available for public enjoyment. In closing, I wanted to share three renderings, um, of the exterior spaces at Charleston East. This one from Charleston Park, looking back at Charleston East, highlighting the proposed enhancements and other public offerings the project will provide. This is looking, uh, north from Charleston Boulevard along Walking Road. And you can see in the background, um, the exterior outdoor seating and dining areas, um, in front of the cafe and the retail Neighborhood Partnership Center. These amenities have been conceived and designed to embrace and welcome the public as they visit our campuses in North Bay Shore. We remain committed to keeping our campuses open and welcoming to all. Um, and just to highlight on, and end on one note, although it's not a topic of tonight's, um, agenda, as we, um, recently submitted a framework plan, a preliminary master plan for North Bay Shore. I did just want to highlight that part of that proposal is to convert thirty-four acres of currently Google-owned office campuses and turn that over to, um, publicly accessible open space. This represents over a third of the project area that will be converted to dedicated lands as well as privately owned and publicly accessible open space, as well as pedestrian and bicycle trails, um, throughout the neighborhoods to connect our campuses with the residential, um, and other amenities, retail amenities that will be provided as part of that redevelopment. So in closing, thank you very much. And Chris and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you so much for your time off. We'll ask you to stop sharing your screen and we'll bring it back to council for questions. Do any council members have questions for staff or the applicant? Alright, so, okay, Councilmember Madzek.
You just one quick question. Um, if you could bring up the, um, map that shows, um, the Google Plex, I have a question about, access there. So, um, I'll try to describe the question here without looking at the, uh, map. And that is, um, can you still go from? Okay, and the one on the right, the proposed, can you go through? Sorry, that's so small, I can't read the labels on it. But basically where you can drive in and you usually go to the, uh, I think you call it the Partner Center. Um, and you can continue on north. Can you do that still if you're walking or biking or, but you can't in a car?
That, that is correct. So that north-south connection, um, from Charleston up to amphitheater will be accessible on foot or by bike. Right now, as I mentioned, it does serve as vehicular access. And while the public can meander up there, um, it is not a, um, officially designated pedestrian path. So this will, um, accommodate that path of travel.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
So I, I, um, have been getting some comments from members of the public about a little taken aback by loss of some of the, um, public open space and suggesting all sorts of things that maybe, I appreciate, um, Mr. Timeoff, your last statement about, uh, what you, additional public open space that you'll be offering, um, in, in the, uh, project you're going to, you're going to submit, or you just submitted. Um, so people have asked all sorts of things about, uh, developing space along Permanente Creek, um, planting riparian trees, um, and things like that. So I'm wondering if you'll be able to do some of those things in the upcoming proposal that you talked about at the very end? If the, any of those things that the public has, has brought up?
Yes.
Too fast.
Absolutely. I mean, part of our landings project, um, that was entitled last year includes, um, significant enhancements along Permanente Creek. Um, in addition, we've proposed over in Shorebird, um, expanding on the Charleston Retention Basin. Um, ten acres of, again, currently occupied. There's four buildings that sit on ten acres, um, that would be turned over to the city to expand the stormwater wetlands and retention area in that area. Um, so habitat creation and, and restoration building on the work that we've, we've done to date. Really enhancing the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity along the existing Stephen Creek and, and Permanente Creek, uh, bikeways is an important part of that. Um, of note, of the thirty-four acres, um, there's around nine acres of, uh, parks and tra, sorry, trails, um, both, both green loop, um, sidewalk areas and other open spaces that are, um, part of creating that connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Alright, so seeing then, um, we will, um, ask if there's any public comment. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button and zoom or press star nine on your phone. And the interim city clerk will display the timer on the screen and we'll continue with our two minutes. So, I think if we could just, um, maybe stop the screen share, please, and then we'll pull up the timer, we can move on to our first speaker. Great. Tim McKenzie, please unmute.
Hi, Tim McKenzie, he/him pronouns. Um, I'm a, I'm a neighbor of Google. I go, on my good days, I go run to Vista Slope right along the Permanente Creek Trail, which, uh, which we just saw on the maps. Um, I'll say as a member of the public, there was a lot of talk about how the public will feel. I feel like fences are not very welcoming and don't really make for an integrated place. Um, I'll just mention that. I'm also a member of the Stanford community. Um, that's a unique place with its own security challenges and it is open. There are not fences. I would actually, I would dislike if there were fences. I wouldn't, I, um, Stanford and Google aren't the same place, but I'll just say I wouldn't like if there were, uh, fences. Although if someone at the, uh, president or provost level, which I assume is similar to the director level, were to make that decision, I really wouldn't have much say in that. Um, and I wonder what workers at Google think about that. I, uh, I know, as I mentioned earlier, I'm chair of the Labor Working Group of Silicon Valley DSA and can't help but notice that there was recently a formation of the Alphabet Workers Union. And I think it would be great to get their perspective on this too, because though the rank-and-file workers going in that actually go through their day-to-day are the ones who are really going to be experiencing the place and hearing their perspective, I think would be very important as well. Um, but personally, as a member of the public, as a community member, I am opposed to the fences. We'll be talking a lot about this today. Um, if you remember a couple of weeks ago at council, when, uh, Dr. Rudolph presented about fences around Montaloma, one of the members of the public actually shared some slides and gave a presentation about, he was a security expert, and he mentioned how fences aren't actually that effective and it's more kind of like treating symptoms rather than root causes. Um, so I'll just, I'll yield the rest of my time and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jesse Connors. Jesse, are you there? Jesse, Jesse Connor, see you there? Alright, we can try to come back to Jesse. How about Cliff Chambers? Can you unmute?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Cliff Chambers, resident of Mountain View and an active member of the Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, but I'm talking for myself tonight. I actually just learned of this agenda item because I was here for an earlier item. I'm concerned about this. Um, I actively participated in the Charleston Eat, uh, East Outreach, uh, that Google had, and they presented at our MVCSP meeting, a major sales point was the access, uh, through Charleston East, which was a, and, and they raised, uh, security concerns, but as a layperson, I'm not really understanding what's changed between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one. Perhaps you've gotten, the council has gotten more information about that. But I, I do applaud, you know, Google's overall efforts in open space and access. But I'm a little, like, the former speaker, I'm a little tired of talking about increased fencing and barriers in, in Mountain View that according to experts do not have, uh, you know, a, a, a great security benefit. So for me, there's not the justification to go back on the promise for Charleston East through the access, uh, through that, which was a major, uh, sales point. And perhaps there's information that I don't have, which is probably the case, but I think the public deserves to know what has changed from the sales pitch that Google had back four years ago or five years ago to today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Waldemar H. Wal, Waldemar H., if you can unmute yourself, please. Alright, we can try to come back. How about Gita Dev? Gita, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor Kamai and council members. I'm sorry that I too, like one of the previous speakers, missed the, uh, agenda item on January twenty-seventh, so this has come as a surprise to us. I'm speaking here for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. As was pointed out earlier, the green loop was a very integral part of the entire specific plan for, uh, North Bay Shore. The North Bay Shore precise plan was based on making North Bay Shore into a finer grid that would allow a more walkable neighborhood for office workers as well as for office workers, as well as the fact that we now plan to have up to 9,000 housing units and maybe 25,000 residents. So making this area a walkable neighborhood is very important. And while I appreciate Google's efforts at making the new plan very interesting, I too feel that blocking that area off creates a supergrid. We're going back to the supergrid, in fact. We're abandoning the idea of the Green Loop. And it raises for me the question as to whether other segments of the Green Loop are also at risk for similar security issues. So I would certainly take time to scrutinize whether that will be the case and to make sure that that does not happen. Because keeping this area walkable is really important. And if we lose that open space, I feel that space along a major corridor like Charleston doesn't quite compensate for being away from streets and in nature. And maybe more of Permanente Creek could be developed as an amenity for the residential public. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander Brown.
Hello, everybody. I am also a neighbor of Google up in North Bay Shore. And I do work at Google and I'm a proud member of a woo, though I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of anyone but myself, and even that's debatable. Like my comrade Tim said, I'm not a huge fan of fences. I've also not worked at main campus for a while, even before work from home. So it's, I'm not, this wouldn't affect my, you know, ingress or regress from work. But damn, if those rainbow fences are amazing. I I love mason rainbows. Can we get more rainbows? And the consensus in several group chats watching this right now is to please add glitter cannons with the rainbow fences. Also, maybe some way of cycling the hues so it can be a flowing rainbow, which would be awesome. It's Google. I'm sure Ruse can make it happen. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Jesse Connors.
Hi, sorry about earlier. So I'm a Mountain View resident and ex-Google employee. And I guess my main concern was that I was really looking forward to being able to walk through the new headquarters and the idea of it being cordoned off is kind of disappointing. So I guess I was wondering if maybe there were still going to be tours available of that area. And I guess echoing some of the past speakers, I guess it seems sort of a little bit arbitrary just to be cordoning off just this little spot. And I'm worried that it'll eventually bleed into other parts of campus being cordoned off. And yeah, I guess I also just wanted to echo that I don't really like fences, but the ones that you designed are pretty awesome.
Thank you. Okay, Waldemar?
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, sorry about.
Yes, so I'm also a Google employee. I worked in the main campus at 1600 for many years. And I am very disappointed by the revocation of public access through the courtyard. It seems like it's designed to segregate Google employees from the public by putting Google employees behind the rainbow curtain. The path along Charleston, I don't think such a path would ever have gotten the 100,000 square foot bonus when the buildings were planned, because that path duplicates an existing path, which is just a few feet away. So you have two paths for the price of one, which makes no sense. And the if the goal is to segregate Googlers from members of the public, which it seems like it is for the courtyard, then the same situation will arise at Charleston East and other locations. So we'll see more fences. And well, had all of those things been disclosed at the start of a project, I would have been fine with it. But I feel like the, this is a bait and switch. I don't know of what has changed in security circles that could not have been foreseen in 2017 when the plans were made. And I don't see why I should trust any promises for public access in future plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, I don't see any other hands, so I will bring it back to council for comments and deliberation. Councilmember Lieber, thank you for starting us off.
I'll be the first one to wade into it. So there's been a lot of talk about the the Green Loop. And and as I remember presenting, the the Green Loop was kind of a sweetener at one point for getting additional square feet of office or something like that. And can staff refresh our understanding of how the Green Loop initially came to be?
Sure. So with the Amphitheater Parkway project in 95, it did get an FAR bonus of 100,000 square feet. And with that, public benefits were provided that included the interior access through that development. And then for the Charleston East project, as part of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan, does show the Green Loop through that building that was included with the approval of that project.
And so there were also actions in 2015 and 2017 that were dependent on or or building on the existence of the Green Loop?
The only actions I know is just the approval of the Charleston East project in 2017. Not sure Stephanie has any other developments that changed.
Yeah, so so the Green Loop that kind of moves through North Bay Shore and provides non-vehicular pedestrian and bike access is a is a component of the precise plan and is envisioned to be built out over time, not only with, you know, new projects, but also through other existing properties. And it was provided for as part of the Charleston East. It, the Google Plex project certainly predated any concept of a of a Green Loop. But it was the pathway and the access through it were were already there. And so the concept of the Green Loop was kind of mapped through the center of the site.
And so under what's proposed, cyclists or walkers would need to go about almost a half mile south. And then this same distance to head back up on the other side of the Google campus without the cut through across, like in the proposal that we're seeing tonight. It would take away the cut through and would leave people having to go a longer distance to get to the same spot.
The path continues all along Charleston Road, so I'm not sure where you're seeing that half-mile drop.
So say, say that someone's coming from Amphitheater and they're coming past the Noel at Charleston Park, then they would need to travel a distance south or west and and then be able to get across and then head the same distance back north.
And they're publicly accessible by paths and ped paths, both to the north and the south along Amphitheater as well as Charleston. And the and the Green Loop was not really meant to be the the only way that people could could, you know, traverse through through these properties. It's really meant to enhance and provide, you know, further gradation of of these, you know, large properties and just provide more options. And there is also the planned cycle track along Charleston Road as part of the Charleston corridor improvements, as well as the existing sidewalk.
Okay, and the comment was made that there's already a path through a sidewalk on Charleston. And do we have a schematic that shows how close what's being proposed tonight is from what already exists?
I don't know if I could pull up a schematic of that, but the existing sidewalk, the difference between the existing sidewalk and the new Green Loop path would be a jog closer to the Amphitheater Parkway, the Google Plex site. So it would take away the sidewalk that is right on Charleston Road and jog upwards towards the Amphitheater site. The new multi-use path is also going to be wider. You know, the multi-use path is going to be 12 feet wide versus a typical sidewalk, you know, like four feet. Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments or? Yes, Councilmember Cheryl Walter.
Yeah, of course, I'm really sad to see that that the ability to go through that building is, you know, is being taken away or redesigned out. I'm not sure the best way to describe that. It was very unusual and but it was, you know, something that we all thought was really a nice, you know, a great feature. On the other hand, I think the Neighborhood Partnership Center is also a great feature. I've never felt, so I, you know, I kind of am with everybody about that's sad, that's sad. But getting through the Google Plex, I have always thought walking through the Google Plex was a mess. It's, you know, you go up there and there isn't a clear path. And there's not, I just found it very confusing and it's up a big hill. Or for North Bay Shore, it's a big hill. So to me, the, you know, what is being proposed along to get through around the Google Plex is actually an improvement, I think. I certainly like the idea of all the the tree-lined, you know, the tree-lined bikeway. So, you know, it's one of those things, it's definitely a mixed bag. But I feel like the the Google Plex, of course, you know, nobody likes to be cut off from anything. That, you know, doesn't feel welcoming, et cetera, et cetera. But having a better pathway for people to go, it will be clear, easier to find. And I think more people will use it than that part through the Google Plex, which I don't think has worked well. I mean, other people must have experienced it when we've gone, you've gone to events at Google. How, what were your feelings?
Thank you, Councilmember Cheryl Walter. Councilmember Hicks.
So I have a couple of questions for the applicant. One is that, as was kind of raised by some members of the public, was was this change in the fencing, was it? I'm wondering how much the employees were, you know, was it something that rose from the employees? How much were the employees, you know, communicated with about this? And yeah, since there's a new union, there's an opportunity to talk to employees about, you know, if, to me, it seems like if if most or all employees are against it, it's not worth doing. So that's one question where where the idea came from. And then the second question, we, a second question is that there's, there've been questions from members of the public about how this impacts other areas. We'll, we see one after another sort of mortgaging, you know, a series of events. And I guess my third question is, is there any way to mitigate that by, as again, some members of the public have raised, maybe improvements along Permanente Creek or any other ideas that the applicant might have?
Okay, so I think we're going to need to bring Mr. Timeoff back to answer your questions, Councilmember Hicks. I think he was moved back as an attendee once we went into council deliberation. And so let's see if we can we can bring him back.
Done. It's been done.
Great, thank you. Mr. Timeoff, were you able to hear those questions?
Yes, I think I'm going to need help with the second one. But let me, let me address the the first one. So there was an assessment by our internal security team. That was, that was the genesis for these improvements. The security fencing is one element of just an overall security enhancement, if you will. And so we've, we've done an evaluation across all of our facilities. And that's, again, where this generated from. The last question, the third question, I believe, was around enhancements to Permanente Creek. Was that right?
Or any other mitigations, any other public, you know, since there's diminished public access? Are there any other places that you could mitigate that?
Yes, so I would I would characterize what we have put forward as replacing the access that is currently provided through, if you're, if you're talking about Google Plex, through the various amenities and plaza spaces, the Noel that we described earlier. We have not planned additional mitigations beyond that. And then I think I'm going to, I apologize, I think I'm going to need help on the second question or just have it restated.
Councilmember Hicks, can you?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is going to cause, as members of the public have mentioned, sort of a chain of events where we're going to see this at, you know, around all the buildings?
Okay, thank you for repeating that. I apologize. As we brought forward the Landings project, these security issues were raised and addressed in those entitlements. And so, yes, security will be an ongoing concern for us. Having said that, we are committed to continuing to make our campus as a whole throughout North Bay Shore welcoming. And that is integral to the framework plan I mentioned earlier, the introduction of housing residential. But securing the office campuses for Google will continue to be a priority for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Madacek.
Thank you. I want to disclose that I met with the applicant about this project. And I do have a question. I'm not sure if the applicant has any data or information on this. But is the courtyard area, like who is it primarily used by? I feel like when I've been to meetings at Google, to me, it looks like employees either having meals or meetings. And do you get much traffic from the public through there?
Apologies. I'll take a first crack at this and then Adam, feel free to to jump in. I may need to give him speaking permissions. But yeah, the visitors that are coming to to meetings at Google use it. There are members of the general public that do come. We do experience a large number of visitors, tourists, if you will, that come to visit Google Plex and they will come through the courtyard, families of Googlers. But as you mentioned, it is used for outdoor meetings and in eating of Googlers. I don't know the breakdown between between those cohorts. But Adam, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I don't think I have much more to add beyond that. And I think we don't have any specific data.
And I think we don't have any specific data on numbers, so it would be kind of anecdotal to what I see. I could give a little personal reflection on it, and I do spend a fair amount of time in and around the Google Plex and. It does feel like it is majority Googlers or like family members or visitors of Googlers. Certainly, there are members of the public. I have seen. A, a number of interactions that are similar to what council member brought up, where you kind of see the public get to the east or west boundaries and look a little bit confused. On if they're welcome or not. I've, I've seen that a number of times and I think that was one of the design intentions we brought to this project was trying to find a way to make it feel very welcoming to the public. Where it's very clear where they should travel. And that's, that's why we designed that very large easterly connection from Charleston Park down to the new multi-use path, is we think it's gonna be. Much clearer and much more welcoming to everyone.
Okay, thanks. I do appreciate that the, the art is functional in the, in Charleston Park. As well as a very different looking fence. I feel like I've said over and over, I like functional art and you nailed it on that one. And I do appreciate that you. Are not putting a fence around the perimeter, so there still is good. Connectivity, I guess I would say, for people who are walking or biking. You know, I do understand the concern about, you know, does this? Mean other buildings might be changed, but I think as you. Put forth proposals for. New development, that certainly security is taken into consideration, but so is access. And so I'm hoping that new buildings that come forward. Have taken all of this into consideration and we're not sort of retrofitting it later on. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So if there are no more questions, I'm gonna move our panelists. Or our guests back to attendees. And bring it back for council deliberation. So there's three items, ones to adopt a resolution. Or there are. For sixteen hundred Amphitheater Parkway, the second is a adopt a resolution for the two thousand North Bay, sorry, North Shoreline Boulevard. And then the third is to offer as the city manager to execute an amendment. Oh, great, thank you so much for pulling that up. So if council has comments on this, it will require a motion and a roll call vote. Councilmember Abi Koga and then Councilmember Madacek.
Thank you, I actually wanted to ask a question of staff in light of. Some of the comments that were brought up, the main one being the balance between security and access and. You know, I, I can understand if this is. A one-off, although I think we did something with landings. You know, the reality is North Bay Shore is primarily land that is. Either owned or occupied or controlled by Google. There's, you know, we anticipate, we know that there are plans for more. Buildings, office buildings, so how do we? How do we ensure that we don't close off every, you know, office building? That's built out there. Especially if we're trying to create neighborhoods and I liken this to like our downtown, we have. Both residential and commercial and. I mean, the property, the offices aren't as big, but there aren't fences around them. So I, I guess, yes, I'm mostly curious or concerned about how we move forward. In this North Bay Shore area in light of these new concerns that have arisen.
Councilmember Abi Koga, I, I'll respond to why staff is recommending approval of this and how we approached it. Primarily, we looked at this as an opportunity. What we had earlier was sort of more of a nine to five. And, and, and area that really wasn't clear to people about the fact that they could travel. And we actually posed this as a challenge to Google to say. If it's gonna be relocated, we're gonna take this opportunity to create art. To connect it to Charleston Park, to connect it to existing plazas, to make the frontage. Of the Google Plex, which is very unfriendly right now and has parking in the front. And convert it into an active pedestrian atmosphere. And we actually think the combination of the both sides of Charleston Park. The frontages that are being created with the new Plaza in Charleston East. And the new Plaza on Charleston Park connecting to Permanent Creek. And then the new facilities of, you know, store, retail and the community center. Along Charleston Park is actually gonna be an enhancement for the public. And we feel like it, it's gonna create a community gathering space. On both sides of the park and, and we're gonna use that as sort of our yardstick for the future. Hopefully, they're not gonna be retrofitted, these are new buildings that we can actually design in the future. That balance both security and design, but I think we've done a, a fairly sort of thoughtful job of working with the applicant. To, to do both in this project and that's why we're recommending it.
So are you anticipating that there could be something other than fencing? To provide the security to these campuses, office campuses. While maintaining open, open access to, for the public.
I think we're gonna work very hard, building by building or group by group to try to limit. Where the fences are, and we did that here. Certainly no perimeter fencing, if at all there was. It would be like artwork along which people could take pictures. And then the area around it, especially the pedestrian atmosphere, which is so unfriendly right now, would be improved. But I think this is a retrofit and I think we have more opportunities with Shoreboard where you can actually design some of these things. And we're hoping to see a better. Just, just a better approach overall. But, but I think the reason why we're recommending this is because it, it actually creates that continuous. Active public area on both sides of the park and along the street.
Okay, I get, so I guess, yeah, as we look at the larger plan, we could even look at. Where buildings go and how you cluster certain buildings together, so you minimize the fencing around the buildings and whatnot.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just add my comments, yes, I, I appreciate. The work that's been put into this and I also do appreciate the public's comments. You know, I, I did actually look at this and originally my thought was this might be better because. I always find like walking through office campuses confusing and I don't think, you know, it's really clear if it's. Private property or not and whether you can get, go through. A campus or not, and so to me, this looked like that has a clear path to places. I appreciate, I, I thought having the retail and the neighborhood center on the outside closer to the park. Would make it more visible and probably more usable in that regard. And I appreciate, I like the public plaza in front of the Google Plex building. Yeah, taking the parking away from there. So in that regard, I thought this was actually an improvement. I understand the interest in wanting to be able to have shorter distances and whatnot and so going through campuses. But, you know, I, I, I heard folks say this is sad and I agree and I think this is sad, but it is a statement on where we are. In our, the world now and we have to, you know, be concerned about security issues and. I know there have been some incidents or attempted incidents around this area. And so, you know, nothing is sacred anymore, even the nation's capital isn't sacred. Buildings aren't sacred anymore, so we do have to be more mindful of security. So in that regard, I think, you know, I, I will support us moving forward on this, but I do want to be. Sure that as we look at the bigger master plans. That we try to minimize barriers and barricades and fencing. And find other ways to provide that security while maintaining access for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madacek.
Thank you, so I am happy to make a motion if you're. Ready to entertain one and obviously deliberation can still continue. But I will move the staff recommendation, which is three things. Adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving a modification. To a previously approved planned community permit to construct site modifications and relocate publicly. Accessible areas and a heritage tree removal permit to remove thirty-one heritage, heritage trees. On a twenty-one acre site at sixteen hundred Amphitheater Parkway to be read in title only, further reading waived. And that's attachment one to the council report. Two, adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving a modification to a previously approved planned community permit. To allow the relocation of publicly accessible areas within an approved five hundred and ninety-five thousand square foot building. On an eighteen point six acre site at two thousand North Shoreline Boulevard. To be read in title only, further reading waived and that's attachment two to the council report. And also authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the disposition and development agreement with Google. Google LLC for sixteen hundred Amphitheater Parkway.
Thank you, Councilmember Madacek, so we have a, a motion. We see Councilmember Leiber's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that I did have an opportunity to meet with the applicant and it was very useful. Particularly in the sense of seeing how many good ideas that staff had brought forward of making this a more meaningful space for the community. And if I'm understanding Mr. Timeoff correctly. He's told us that the community space will be run similarly to. The community space in San Francisco and that has become a very important amenity for the nonprofit. Community in San Francisco. And we do have a real dearth in our area of, of physical spaces for nonprofits to use. For a variety of different sized events. So I think that's a, a very important opportunity, but I really agree with Councilmember Abi Koga and I'm really glad that she raised this that. I, I think that we do need to do some thinking and have some policies about barriers on buildings. And I, I recall when this issue has come up in the past. We had a policy that our default was that all campuses needed to be open. To the public and obviously times have changed, but I, I think, you know, thinking that through and, and having some kind of. Overarching conversation about that would be an important. Thing for the future and also securing the, the benefits in some written or. Durable way that Google offers to us is, is very, very important.
Thank you, so we had a, a motion, do we have a second on that motion? Councilmember Shaw Walter, I see your hand.
Yes, I'd like to second the motion and I also agree that, that. One of the things that was so exciting about the, the North Bay Shore plan. And, and was at such odds with what we were seeing with the Apple development is the permeability of the sites. And so, you know, keeping the, the, the flow of, of residents, if workers. Moving openly in nature and around the Green Belt, it is really important to the community and to this plan. So we want to make sure that, you know, that that is maintained as we balance, you know, necessary security means, but. Glad to second it and also, oh, I, I, I have used the one in, in San Francisco for Water Now Alliance meetings. And it's delightful and at least the one in San Francisco, my understanding is that they foot the bill. For not only the rent, but also the catering. And I, I certainly hope that that will be the case here. It's a, it's a very, it's a very nice community support of nonprofits.
Thank you, so we have a, a motion and a second. Do we have anyone else who would like to make any comments on this item? Or perhaps we're ready for a roll call vote? All right, the, the only thing I'd like to. Is just the, the topic of accessibility. When thinking about both of these changes, I was really thinking about not only those of us who can. You know, walk or bike, but those who maybe quadriplegic or have ADA access and so. I do want to disclose, I met with the applicant and brought that up and, you know, one of, that was actually part of the user experience that they were thinking about. When making these changes and I really appreciate that that was taken into consideration. And, you know, I, I do feel like there, there was an element of place making that was taken into consideration. And thank you to our city staff for encouraging that and moving that along and. You know, I really think that, I appreciate the, the comments from colleagues about how we can continue the conversation about really kind of. Making sure that we still have that open feel in our community and that North Bay Shore will be a place where you can get around easily. And speaking of getting around easily, wayfinding signage was something that I brought up because I think that that's really critical. And I also brought up to the applicant, it would be great to have that in multiple languages. Which they were open and amenable to, so I think that they're, you know, appreciate that they're working with us on that and that what they did create was. You know, artistic and as Mr. Vostova mentioned, kind of a minimal design, so. Okay, Ms. Von Jolinton, you can take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Hi.
Councilmember Madacek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll move on to item six point two, which is the vacation of public easement at nine three nine West Al Camino Real. The item is to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation of a public service easement. At nine three nine West Al Camino Real, the vacation is. Vacation of the easement is necessary for the construction of an approved development for a senior memory care facility. Above ground floor retail and restaurant uses. This public hearing is being held in accordance with California Streets and Highways Code. With the purpose to hear from all persons interested in or objecting to the proposed easement vacation. For this item, we don't have a staff presentation, so I'll first turn it over to council if there's any questions. All right, seeing no questions, I'll open it to the public for public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the council for deliberation and a motion. Councilmember Madacek.
I don't have any questions or comments, so I'm just happy to make a motion, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga.
And sorry, that would include the reading of the title of the resolution.
It's just a vacation of public easement at nine three nine West Al Camino Real.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, I move the vacation of the public easement at nine thirty-nine West Al Camino Real.
And I will second that, thank you.
Great, thank you, we have a motion from Councilmember. And a second from Councilmember Madacek, so we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Abi Koga.
Hi.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Hi.
Councilmember Madacek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Ice Mirror Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item seven, which is new business. Item seven point one is the Mountain View Wisman School District proposed fencing. So first. So first, we'll have a staff presentation from our community services director, John Marshon.
Good evening, and I'm going to start sharing my screen here. All right. Good evening. My name is John Marshon. I'm the Community Services Director. And tonight I am here to present to you information about the Mountain View Wisman District, the Mountain View Wisman School District proposed fencing project. The City of Mountain View and the Mountain View Wisman School District have had a history of collaboration. Examples include shared use of two gymnasiums, shared open space, and installation of eight million gallon reservoir under the Fields at Graham Middle School, and you can see photos of those on the screen. Recently, the city has allocated approximately five point four million dollars toward infrastructure projects that provide benefits to both the district and the community. In addition to these capital projects, there are a number of initiatives and programs that are longstanding collaborative efforts, including after school programs, enrichment programs, and safety related programs. The first joint use agreement with the Mountain View School District was in nineteen fifty-nine, and since then, agreements have provided city access to the open spaces at school locations during non-school hours, and the city has maintained those areas. As part of its master facility plan, the district identified a need for perimeter fencing to enhance the campus security and safety. In response to public input and concerns received by the city, the district superintendent has provided updates at three public meetings. That is one Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and two council meetings, and those dates are listed on the screen currently. As part of the agreement with the district, the city is able to provide feedback and input regarding the district's proposed fencing project. And on January twenty-sixth, the City Council approved a motion related to the proposed fencing project. The motion requested the city manager to dialogue with the district superintendent and prior to the working group for Monaloma, have the City Council create an official statement and position on where the city stands on the issue, and the direction also included an item to bring back a shared use policy on parks at a later date. Staff has compiled suggested interest and desired outcomes for the Monaloma Working Group based on what appeared to be consensus of council comments at the January twenty-sixth meeting. There are four points listed as interests related to the working group process and two points listed as desired outcomes of the working group itself, and those were provided in your staff report. And similarly, staff has compiled four suggested overarching priorities for open space at district school sites at a high level, again, based on what appeared to be consensus of council members at the January twenty-sixth council meeting. Following input from City Council tonight, staff has prepared the following next steps. First, the letter from the mayor will be edited to include feedback from the council tonight and sent to the district's board of trustees. Second, staff will take council's interests into the Monaloma Working Group that starts this Thursday. And finally, staff will include funding in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two recommended budget to complete an update of the Parks and Open Space Plan. Staff intends to incorporate both the two thousand eight recreation plan and the two thousand fourteen Parks and Open Space Plan into one Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. The project will include an analysis of the existing fee schedule for programs as well as field use, facility use, and the associated guidelines with those fees. This slide provides the two recommendations presented to council this evening. The first is related to council providing feedback on the proposed fencing project and communicating the city's interests to continue collaborative efforts to provide access to open space and opportunities for input through the Monaloma Working Group. The second is to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the district board of trustees to transmit the council's feedback. A draft letter has been attached to the staff report using the compiled list staff created, and council may modify the interest and desired outcomes proposed by staff. And this concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Marshon. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I'm going to turn it to public comment. So we will set the timer for two minutes for public comment unless other arrangements have been made. So first, we will have Board President Devin Conley speak. If we could just pull up the timer, please.
Good evening, Mayor Kamay, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and council members. My name is Devin Conley, and I'm the Board President for the Mountain View Wisman School District. Our district believes that our open space is our handshake with the community. We absolutely desire to maintain a welcoming open space while also meeting the security concerns of a public school campus. To date, we are one of the only districts in Santa Clara County that is not put in perimeter controls to ensure the safety of our students. As school board president, I do not have the same pressures you face on City Council to balance the security needs of a large for-profit corporation like Google against the needs of the community for open space. I serve our Mountain View Wisman School District community, but most especially our children. Google's planned fencing off of the Charleston East and the Googleplex campuses will significantly change public access to open spaces at those sites. I have a background in architecture and urban design, and I remember catching my breath when I saw the original designs from B I G for the green loop in this area and the interweaving of open space and private space that was proposed. There may be few residents close to those properties currently, but recent plans suggest seven thousand households will eventually be located nearby. City Council unanimously approved fencing off Google's office space tonight in an effort to meet the to meet the security needs of Google. Unlike Google, the school district is not planning to change public access, which since nineteen fifty-nine has been to allow public use during outside of school hours. To provide security for our students and staff, we plan to erect aesthetically attractive and inclusive fencing that will secure the site during school hours. We appreciate your partnership as we move forward in this process, balancing the needs of many stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim McKenzie.
Hello again, everybody. Tim McKenzie, him pronouns. I find it strange that we keep hearing about fencing and being a welcoming community. This like the Bay Area in writ large is viewed across the country as some hyper progressive area. The the, a lot of people would think that everyone here would be against a border wall, like, oh, the the Trump wall is a terrible, terrible idea. And then we're talking about making fences in our community to be welcoming. I find it really strange and confusing. Well, I've, you guys know me a little bit. I've talked at council for a few years at this point, but I lived in Mountain View for a few years before I really got involved in process of commenting at City Council and getting involved in exactly what's happening. So if this was happening when I first moved to Mountain View, from my perspective, all of the sudden, there would be a fence that appeared at a, on my way to the Caltrain when I'm walking there. I I noticed in this, the in the letter that has been drafted that there will be really open meetings. I hope that this, that the Monaloma Working Group and everything continues to be really open, and that this isn't, we're just saying, yes, we'll put up fences all over the place in Monaloma, in North Bay Shore, where there's not people living there, but there will be soon. It doesn't really feel welcoming. I look forward to continuing to participate with the school district as this process goes forward, but you know, the with the pandemic, it's a little bit easier to do these things, but there are other things that I have to do in my life other than constantly come to this, and there are a lot of people who don't have the time to do this and aren't even aware that this is going on. And I hope that you think about that a little bit, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Zaworski.
I arranged where I sent my slides to to Sylvia. If she has a copy of my slides, she can put them up, and I'm speaking for at least five closer to twelve maybe.
Can you see the slides?
Not yet.
Okay.
I can bring.
I have them up. Just having a hard time sharing.
Okay.
Can you see them now?
Not yet.
So before we get started, Mr. Zaworski, it would be helpful if you could list who you're speaking on behalf of.
Yes, I have to speak on behalf of Bill Lambert, Pamela Baird, Misha Dinen. Oh, here you go. My slides are up. There you go. Bruce England, Louise Zaworski, Vivek Chopra, Rebecca Chopra, as well as a few others. Thank you so much. And the slides, do I have? I'm sorry.
I want to advance, yes.
I'm very glad. People who are being spoken for. Okay. The people being spoken for are on the first slide as well, as I have about six others. Oh, no, I was asking the clerk if she was going to verify the attendance on the Zoom of the people being spoken for. Oh, sure. That's not my job. Okay. I believe you're on mute, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, City Attorney Chopra. I did not find Misha Denim. I'm sorry if I'm misspelling the name.
Okay.
Is that person on Zoom, or did you alter the name?
No, that's his name. He's a programmer. He may or may not be on.
Okay. And was Pam Baird here?
She is. She's, I don't know if she's on the meeting. She said she would be.
And Zoe Zaworski was the other.
She's on. She's in, she's in the other room on the phone, the thing, so if you can't find her, you're gone.
Thank you. That was it?
Okay.
I can advance. I can advance.
Okay, okay. So if I say next, that's good.
Yes, sir.
Next, and you're just gonna start the clock. Okay, I'm talking in behalf of Monaloma neighborhood on the on the issue of the fencing and the park, but not so much for Monaloma, but for the whole city. The parks issue is a crisis not just for and effectively addressing the shortage of green space and parks in general impacts the quality of life, our ability to address housing issues, our ability to address issues of social and economic equity. The green space issue, as we see it, is only going to become more difficult to tackle as land values continue to increase and as economic growth returns to normal post COVID. While we are delayed and and the J U A becomes more difficult, park space and opportunities will continue to dwindle and become more expensive. Staff is looking to council for guidance, and we asked staff, council to provide staff with good guidance that they can go forward with. Next. As background, in nineteen eighty-six, my company opened its first office on the site of the current Computer History Museum. Next. The Shoreline Amphitheater was only three years old. Next. The side of the, of, I'm sorry, Shoreline Park was three years old. Shoreline Amphitheater was a city dump. And if anybody was around then, which I know half the council was, they remember what it smelled like when it was being built. Next. And the Googleplex was a pumpkin farm. Next. And finally, right behind where we were at the corner of Pear, and it was called Sterling then, was the Pear Avenue Garbage Company, which was now the Microsoft play of headquarters, and it was encabited by eight feral peacocks. Next. Thirty-five years later, we've experienced a perfect storm of capital, innovation, infrastructure, and and an environment where everyone wanted to live, and it's created some of the world's largest, most innovative companies, which have created great challenges for anyone trying to run the city and plan for the future. Next. So but growth's like a fire, and it needs oxygen, and oxygen for many of these businesses are the influx of continuous new talent, capital, and innovation. And as we've been successful, our prices have gone up, our space has become less available, and it's become more and more difficult to maintain the level of of quality of life that we've been expect, we've become accustomed to. And so we, we're our commutes that used to take minutes now take tens of minutes and sometimes hours if you're coming from the East Bay. We like, we need great schools to to create that oxygen, we need, and to create the job opportunities and the recreation and park space. Next. So poorly planned, uncontrolled expansion not only makes starting growing businesses difficult, but it also diminishes the quality of all life for residents. And with this burden inevitably falls on hardest on the lower ends of the economic spectrum, who can no longer afford to live here or have to commute great distances. Next. So the city relies heavily on school property to provide its citizens with park space. Something like thirty percent of the park space that's listed in this Parks and Rec listings of all parks in Mountain View is currently owned by the Mountain View Wisman School District. And if you take the totals that's included, this park space for this high schools, it's closer to eighty-eight out of two hundred, which is closer to forty percent. The state tries to mandate a Quimby ratio of three when we look at our park space of a thousand acres, park space per thousand residents. If we include our school fields, which aren't open during the school hours, our ratio is two point seven eights. When we take them away, it's one point four three. Next. Madam Clerk, what's my timeline? Well, I don't know how I'm doing it. I can't see it. What what am I up to? I'm sorry. Go back.
You have one minute left.
I have one minute left. Okay, so let me let me go on this. Let me go to the last two slides. So we're looking for a strategic partnership through the thing that's the win-win-win. A well-constructed plan will make the best use of limits green space we have. We we looked at the green space of the Drift Stone is undeveloped, non-toxic, and carefully located, and we're looking to this agreement to consider on both sides. The district needs to know that green space that they give the city that's only used twenty percent of daylight areas is not like a new park, and the district needs to, the city needs to realize that their parklands or district parklands are worth a whole lot more than they were a long time ago. Next. So we urge council to renegotiate the city, MBW's SD, Mountain View Wisman School District to acquire rights to Monaloma and Cooper Parks, look to improve upon and increase public access to other fields, reach a long-term agreement to allow for greater certainty, coordinate the location of organized sports, and this was Councilwoman Abe Koga's idea, away from impacted green space areas, add green space wherever possible, and as the city becomes urbanized, look to provide suitable, less reliant, less space reliant neighborhoods to all, and provide staff with clear guidance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate Loring. And if we could reset the timer to two minutes, please.
I'm an older daily Monaloma park walker. And fences may or may not provide the security, but we know that they're going to create a safety problem. And that was shown to me today. I was walking in the park. There's a place where it passes a top lot with trees on one side and sand on the other. The whole corridor is about ten feet wide, and I was approached by a child on a scooter. So I got off the path. The kid was wobbly and followed me off the path. And I had to further back up. Had there been a fence where it is proposed, that child would have hit me. And both I and the child would probably have been injured. So my alternative is to walk on the city sidewalks. Terrific. And I have to tell you, I try to avoid those in the Monaloma area. The sidewalks are often in poor repair. They're raised by tree roots. They're uneven. They're cracked. They're poorly repaired. And when they are repaired, they're repaired with raised asphalt. I've fallen several times. I have recently noted that some of these sidewalks have not been repaired for I have recently noted that some of these sidewalks have not been repaired for more than sixty-five years. And how do I know this? Well, it's pretty easy. The folks that put it in, put their company name on it and the year that they were put in. Nineteen fifty-four. So as you look at the fencing issues, safety of children are, is very important. And so is that of the community and especially of those of us that are older. And I would ask that you would consider both when you consider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Cho Han. Okay, Jessica, because you have an older version of Zoom, I need to promote you to panelists to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear and see you. Thanks.
Me too. Oh, great. Um, okay. Well, I want to thank council for your time, um, bringing the Mountain View Wisman School District fencing proposal issue back to the discussion board and providing input and direction in advance of the first Montaloma working group this week, of which I'm a, um, community representative. Through the city's influence, I look forward to a fair and constructive dialogue with the school district and other working group reps that will take into consideration goals of all parties and objectively come to a decision that meets the needs of all stakeholders. I'm confident that we can come up with a win-win-win solution for mitigating school security concerns while maintaining open park access. And I'm excited to have John Marchant as the city's working group rep. Uh, I believe by virtue of your feedback, the entire working group will be empowered to work towards the direction you set. Um, I request council to provide guidance that takes into account the needs of the larger community and promotes equitable access to green space and health, wellness and safety for the entire community, which is especially evidenced during the COVID pandemic. Um, I want to add that I saw on the staff report that new signage is under development. It's my hope that council will provide feedback that changes to signage, per the staff report, may be a potential change to current access for the community, um, for the past fifty years. And based on the current JUA, section three A, the city's Parks and Rec website and current park signage, um, that it's open from six AM to three thirty, uh, to thirty minutes after sunset. Um, it's my request that changes to access should be aligned following the outcome of the working group and agreement on a new JUA through discussion in a public session. Um, I want to thank you for your time and consideration here. And I'm really looking forward to working with John Marchant in the upcoming working group. I yield my time.
Thank you. Robin Lynn.
Hey there. Thanks. Um, do you have?
Just, just one moment, Robin. So I just wanted to let, uh, the public know. So Robin will speak for five minutes. Um, and the interim city clerk will check if all attendees are in the room.
Yeah, let me give her names, them, or give her their names. My name, so Robin. Um, Michael, Michael Halleck. Do you want me to list it or do you want me to go one by one?
Um, I just couldn't find Andy Winterhosen. Is Andy here?
Should be on.
I, I see them. Do you? Okay. Then the others, they were on. So thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to name them just for people to hear? Okay. So myself, Robin Lynn, uh, Michael Halleck, Andy Winterhosen, Alex Winterhosen and, um, Vicki Quo. Is that five? That's five. And then there's a presentation when you're ready. Um, Ms. Wanderlinden, thank you so much. And I guess while there's dead time, thanks so much, uh, uh, Ms. Wanderlinden. Um, I feel like, uh, problems don't stay problems long when you're involved.
Very kind. Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much. Yes, basically, I'd like to talk about growing up. Um, can you go to the next slide, please? So Mountain View has obviously experienced tremendous growth and I guess I wanted to quantify it and quantify it in a way. Uh, and how I looked at it is, um, how does, has Montaloma's population grown? Um, the last time there was an official count was in, um, twenty-ten for the census. So there are a little over twenty-five hundred residents. And so, um, there hasn't been, I guess the twenty-twenty census hasn't been released yet. And so the nearest approximation is looking at the November twenty-twenty elections. Precinct, uh, thirty-four oh-two is conveniently all Montaloma and there are three thousand ballots cast. So that represents over twenty percent growth in ten years. And I guess I'll put a pin in it and we'll take a look and see whether park space has scaled in that amount. Can you go to the next slide? So on the left, I guess it's a little small, but on the left is basically a map of Mountain View and the park space by ownership and by size. And as you see, what, what you see is that a lot of space in Mountain View is actually owned, not owned by the city. In fact, it's owned by various school districts. And the, to help visualize it on the right is when I take those school district parked, um, own sites out. Because in my mind, it really isn't a park when residents are technically only able to access them between the hours of six and seven-thirty in the morning and then after four. Um, at the height of winter, that would mean the community would only have access to these parks technically for two hours a day. That's to, in my mind, not really a park. Can you please go to the next slide? And so I really feel like we're at an inflection point. Who does Mountain View want to be when it grows up? Because I think as we densify, each decision is going to be, so have so many, each land use decision will have so many quality of life impacts to current and future residents. And, um, on the right is just all these different ways that it could. And I think sitting in on the earlier discussion of the five fifty-five West Middlefield development, I mean, it's clear. It's, there are so many different interests. There are so many different people who see these little patches, I mean, not little, but these patches of land in so many different ways. And so it's just going to, I feel, be even, this is just going to be how it is. And so, um, I guess we get to choose, right? Feels like right now we're on the path of ten thousand cuts. And, uh, kind of, can we do better? And I, uh, if you go to the next slide. Um, the SARS code doesn't really seem sustainable. And so what is the stack path forward? In my mind, it's really, um, four things. Number one, let's, let's really admit that we have, um, growing pains. Uh, it's, there are no near-term park space alternatives to the communities around Montaloma, Stevenson, Critten and et cetera parks. There are just none. So let's acknowledge that there are growing pains. Number two, let's assert that the affected communities must have all-day access to these parks, especially during COVID, until city, the city can identify alternative solutions. These communities are not criminals for using these park spaces during the day. Number three, let's really just, um, I hope council can boldly direct and empower staff to work with the community to holistically ideate bold and creative solutions to address these growing pains. Because I think, I, I mean, I'm, I want to make a difference in my community. And I'm assuming that, you know, the seven of you, as well as all city staff are not, you know, doing this for any other reason than you want to have impact on your community. And, um, so I think at this point, it, it feels hard to make impact. Um, and so that kind of goes to number four, which is, can we radically assess whether city processes and structures provide efficient and effective service to all? And this includes staff, residents, developers, businesses. Because I think, you know, as process, as growth happens, you know, processes and structures sometimes, that worked for previous iterations of, you know, your, your, your organization just are not scalable to new realities. And so I hope that combined these four, um, if council would consider taking these four steps, we can all really be, take ourselves off the path of ten thousand cuts and go on the path where we keep Mountain View great and make it great into the future. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. We'll move to Alexandra Brown and we'll go back to our two minutes.
Oh, I, I would use that time so wisely. I, I would not. Howdy. I really appreciate Devon's comments. She knows I stan. I still don't like fences. They provide the illusion of security while perpetuating a culture of sedition and exclusion. As the board president noted, the earlier vote in support of fences sets a precedent, making this a viral and I think harmful meme. I love to see the danger of precedent become so immediately obvious. Anyway, can we make the school fences even more colorful than the Google fences, like super gay? Just, but when we make the fence itself sparkly, because I doubt we want to put cannons around areas where children play, because that might actually be dangerous, unlike most of the public, who we're teaching the children to fear. Oh, also, can we bring back the feral pee fowl? Uh, that sounds amazing. Uh, I would love to go on a walk and see a bunch of, uh, pee, pee hens, peacocks roaming around. Thanks.
Thank you. Debbie Cunningham.
Okay, am I on?
Yes.
Hi there. I'm Debbie Cunningham. I've been a Montaloma resident for twenty-four years. And my husband and I have owned a house and raised our kids here. One of my major concerns is the green space issue, not just for our neighborhood, but for all of Mountain View. I appreciate how our city takes serious the need for green space for our residents, for our health benefits, as evidenced by the tree program that we have in Mountain View, how lovely and beautiful our city is. But the proposed fence is in complete contrast to that very beautiful effort. Not only is the fence going to be an eyesore, as someone mentioned before, the narrow pathways causing harm and injury, strollers, pedestrians, safety for the elderly, pets on leashes and more. There's going to be a lack of space to be able to enjoy refreshment and rejuvenation within our own community that will be lost, as well as other people that come into our space because we have it. We're a gra, we grab, we have people gravitate to our space because it's beautiful. I do not believe that the proposed fence will be as effective as a security guard or extra persons on the school grounds. These would be really great during operating hours to ensure safety and security. And the whole argument of a fence with the possibility of a live shooter on campus just does not hold up to the other measures that can be taken in order to calm those fears. I've yet to see the evidence, testimonies or statistics of teachers or parents or students expressing these fears in order to justify the fence proposal. I just ask that you please slow down the process, consider other less drastic measures and, um, let the community speak. Um, I'm not in favor of how the superintendent has gone along with this and left us out. Um, I'm just asking for more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan McDonald. Joan, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Um, I was very impressed during the discussion about the Google revamp, that the emphasis between security and access kept coming up over and over and over again. And that's exactly what's happening with the park situation at Montaloma and also at other sites. And the district apparently feels that the security problems are very, very large. And the only way to deal with them is by promoting the building of fences. I hope that Jessica's optimism is actually, um, real. I think that the working group needs to hear all of the various alternatives that people in the community have come up with that are better than the two or maybe three fence alternatives that have been offered at Montaloma. As far as we know, when I was on the school board, when it was just the Wisman district for thirteen years, and we did not have this trouble. And although the law maybe says the public can't be on the fields during school hours, lots of people were. And the school didn't use all of the fields in Mountain, in Montaloma then, and they don't now. So that one of the alternatives should be allowing part of the fields for the community during school hours.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Shawnee Kleinhaus.
Good evening, Mayor Kamay and City Council. Again, this is Shawnee Kleinhaus, present, uh, Clara Valley Audubon Society. But I want to talk about people and about light pollution. Uh, because light pollution is showing to be linked to so many diseases. And it's not only the pollution, actually, it's light at night in general. And every day, there's another study that comes out and shows problems. The last one came last week and shows that premature birth is connected to light pollution. We already know that affective and mood disorders, anxiety, depression, obesity, diabetes, breast, thyroid and prostate cancer and sleep disorders, all associated with light in general. And when there's pollution, that's worse. But light in general at night causes all these problems. And I heard that the school district is proposing to also have fencing, not, uh, lighting, not only fencing. So that's very worrisome. And especially if you have lighting near a creek, like at Landell School, because that's, uh, where it can really impact the wildlife as well, um, in attracting the insects and birds to lights and by basically impacting the biological, um, the biological metabolism and, and gene expression and, uh, hormone control of animals that are walking around there. So thank you.
Thank you. Ayinde Rudolph, Dr. Rudolph.
Uh, oh, thank you, everyone. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As you know, we are responsible for the safety of fifty-two hundred students, more than six hundred staff members every day. Well, many of us enjoy the open campus field. The reality is our staff members regularly have a approach, have to approach, uh, people on campus who are not authorized to be there. Recently, our Board of Trustees received a letter that was signed by all of our Montaloma teachers expressing their ongoing concerns about dog bites, bike thefts and other safety concerns that would be mitigated by more secure, uh, perimeters. Our understanding there is a palpable concern about fencing. I think it is important to note that our master's facility plan calls for installation of public restrooms for access after hours, minor lighting that facilitates a safer environment for staff and community members to walk through certain parts of our campus that are poorly lit. And then sure, our plan is never focused on eliminating access, but in ha, instead, various enhancements. As signaled earlier this evening, protecting adults at their work site is important, even if it comes at the expense of open space. We should care just as much about the adults as we do students. And our teachers who are frontline workers have the clearest understanding of the dangers that face their students and colleagues. We cannot abdicate on more obligation to keep our employees and our students safe. And sometimes that comes in conflict with what the public desires. It is extremely hard to find the appropriate balance. And while it is unfortunate that our organizations are held to the same standard we're considering open space, but just like Google, our goal is to keep our employees safe. But more importantly, we must assure the safety of our students. As we all know, Mountain View Wisman School District partners with the city, provide access to the community. We do appreciate this and we, uh, for recreational leagues as well as other, uh, access during non-school hours in return for the help, for the city to help maintain the fields. Please understand that the city, the district does hear and understand the residents' concerns and we believe that we can find a mutually agreeable, uh, design that would allow, that would address the parents, students and employees legitimate safety concern while at the same time preserving residents' access to school fields outside of school hours. More, more.
Thanks so much. Sorry. James Fair.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I've lived in the Montaloma area for over forty years now. And, uh, it's very short of park spaces. I'm sure you're getting the hint. Um, and this whole thing about a fence is solving a problem. It doesn't seem to. And this whole thing about a fence is solving a problem that doesn't seem to exist. You know, there's really, I don't think there's any need for it. If somebody's giving them a hammer and they're keep looking for a nail. And the amount of park space available with Montaloma residents, you know, we've talked about the Quinby ratio of three acres per 1,000. And if this fence goes in, that's going to drop to under 0.3 acres per 1,000. We really need more park space than that. Part of the problem came up in that the city had committed Montaloma Park to the residents when we were doing the Mayfield, then HP Mall discussions without putting in houses over there. And a request was put in for more park space at that time. And we were assured that, oh, no, no, you've got the Montaloma Park. You don't need any more park space. We got plenty of park space. Well, it turns out we don't have the Montaloma Park. It turns out there is no such thing as the Montaloma Park. It's just the Montaloma school ground. I would say, you know, not doing anything on fences until you can come up with a solution to increase the park area per the 2014 requirement of three acres per 1,000 residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ethan Chukie, please unmute. Ethan, are you there? All right, how about if we try Heather? Heather, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Heather. We'll go back to Ethan.
Okay, I just wanted to comment that I also loved the rainbow fences at Google, and that if we are destined to have fences, which I certainly hope not, and I've already stayed my position on that in the past, that they look beautiful and amazing and fun, and really capture the spirit of our neighborhood and our community. And that we can, I know that the school district has said that they would make them nice, but I'd like to make them wonderful if we're stuck with them anyway. So bring on the rainbows, bring on the glitter. Well, no, not glitter, letters back for the sea turtles, as my children will say. But maybe you can get some community input and community contributions to the creativity of the fences.
Thank you. Okay, Ethan, let's try again. Yes, I hear you.
All right. Sorry. Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm a new resident to Mountain View. Wanted to bring a new resident perspective. I actually moved here from Cupertino. And I moved here because Mountain View has a much better sense of community. And I so, I so I hope everybody really thinks about the factors at play there and, and how those could change long term. And I think one of those is the open space. And how much more welcoming Mountain View feels in general as a result of that. So, so really think about the direction where this would take the, the community, as everybody else has stated. And also, I would really advise or suggest that both the school district and the city consider consulting with real experts in the security concern, because my, a little bit of background I have is I've participated as a volunteer in multiple law enforcement and military trainings in shooting response. And as a result of that, I know there are professionals in that space that study these problems on how to react to them and keep people safe. And I'm personally not convinced that a fence is going to do anything. And I would also say that there's evidence to suggest a fence could be dangerous. Why? Because the number one defense mechanism taught by anybody, anywhere for active shooter situations is to run. Where do you run if you're inside a fence? You run to the doorways of the fence. Or guess what? The tactical community affectionately calls any and all doorways fatal funnels. Because they funnel targets to them. They are commonplace for people to shoot. So I would, I would suggest consulting with real tactical professionals that are expert in these scenarios to see if the security claims are valid.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes public comment. So I'd like to bring it back to the council for comments and deliberation. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. The spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak. If this meeting goes on for very long, I might have to drop out, but I wanted to make sure to get my, my two cents in. So first, I, I find the the comparison to the Google proposal interesting. And I think as a starting point, a question for either staff or representative of the school district, but if the council were to send a letter, you know, in the, in the strongest possible terms, said, we do not want a fence installed at this site. Would that guarantee that no fence is installed?
Councilmember Ramirez, I can take that question. So, and city attorney, please chime in if I'm missing anything. But essentially, in the joint use agreement, there is a section that says that the city may, or should be, can confer with the school district. So there is nothing in there that gives the city the ability to outright deny a facilities improvement from the school district. But the school district is certainly required to take the city feedback and listen to our interests.
Thank you. I think, I think that's, that's helpful. And, and that's one of the, I think, the key factors that distinguish this item from the, the Google access issues. In that case, we have the authority to accept or deny, in that case, modifications to development agreements for conditions of approval. And we can be held accountable for whichever decision that we make. And I, what I heard loud and clear is the council is not enthusiastic about the loss of public access. But in weighing those considerations, we made, you know, a determination that the modifications that Google had proposed to, or I guess in place of the, the public access that had been provided formally, you know, were, were, you know, had merit and were sufficient to, to justify those changes. In this case, I think, you know, that it, we're, we're advocating. And if the school district has a different opinion, it is, you know, their prerogative to to come to a different conclusion. And it, in my mind, I think that the two things that we're striving to achieve is to, I think it's stated in the letter, maximize public access to the greatest extent we're able to. And, and to preserve permeability, which are important, especially in areas like Montaloma, where there, there really isn't a significant open space opportunity. That's, you know, anywhere close to, to the quality provided by the school district property. So that, that's, that's my interest. I think it's, it's well articulated, well articulated in the letter. And to the greatest extent, we're able to balance these two unfortunately conflicting values. You know, the, the city's interest in maximizing public space and the school district's interest in maximizing security. You know, the best, that's, that's what I'm hoping comes out of the, the working group. I guess the only other thing I'll say is we do have to be mindful of the, the erosion of public access to open space, because it does have a significant impact in how we plan for the creation of open space as the city develops. And I know the city manager, I think, has, has mentioned that in the context of the strategic roadmap and goal setting, we'll be looking at opportunities to update our open space and recreation master plans. And I think that will be incredibly value, especially valuable, especially as, you know, we start seeing, you know, these kinds of considerations come up. And as we start seeing, you know, more high density development. So that, that's, that's a, a critical project that I, I'm fairly optimistic the council will support once it comes forward. I'm eager to hear what, what my colleagues have to say about this. But I, I do think that this is, this is quite different from the Google consideration. And I, I just want to sort of keep that in mind, that, you know, the, the accountability mechanism is, is different for each. In this case, no matter, you know, what the city council ends up recommending, we can't, you know, prohibit the school district from, from making this determination. So I personally, I would feel pretty disturbed by the notion that we should be held accountable for, for something that we have no ultimate control over. I'll stop there and, and I'll, I'll do my best to stay on till probably 11 o'clock or so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate you hanging in there with us. Councilmember Hicks.
Well, first I want to thank the Vice Mayor for hanging in there this long after hospital treatment. I would, I don't know, think that I would still be here. That said, I actually, although Vice Mayor, I think that, you know, you're certainly right, that we're not, you know, able to give or deny a permit in the way we are for, you know, for other, for developments and for Google. And I, I think that I would not want to say that, that we have no ability to influence things at all. I, I, I think that the school district and the city are, are in constant communication and partnership. And I think that although we're not, you know, giving out a, or denying a permit, for a partnership to be healthy, we have to both listen to each other. So I don't want to, I don't want to start off, you know, with our, our first statement being that we have no, no influence here at all, because I, I don't think that's the case. And I want to continue to have a healthy relationship. So, you know, I, I don't want to start making threats or anything. But I actually thought that the conversation around Google fencing was, that, that discussion could be a really good model for this discussion as well. I thought a lot of the talks about, well, in particular, what we talked to Google about was no perimeter fencing of the site and tight fencing around the building itself. And that's, you know, I kind of agree with the representatives of the school district when they brought that up as an example, and also members of the public. This is what a lot of the Montaloma residents are asking for. So, you know, I think we could, we could almost solve the situation by just, by just doing what Google did. Tight fencing around the buildings. What we talked about with Google was admitting that, you know, for community building, we need permeability and access, perimeter enhancements. I mean, you know, trees, landscaping, and more wonderful fences when, when we do have fences. You know, that, I think that would be a great model. So other things that I might write into any letter. I liked the idea of coordinating the location of organized sports away from impacted green space, which I think came from Councilmember Abbott Coga. Also, reviewing the joint use agreement, in particular, I think there's been a problem around who gets notified and when. You know, I think the city was notified after the, the plans were fairly complete, when our com, when our comments on those plans would either be ineffective or annoying. And I would like to be notified earlier when my comments will not be annoying. And, oh, and also, I, I would like, you know, I think there's kind of, I would like, also, the joint use agreement doesn't say who gets notified. And I think that for, because the Mountain View Wisman School District owns what, two thirds of what we now consider our neighborhood parks, I think council has to be notified on, you know, almost anything, because I think that, you know, even if it comes to us just through an email or, or just on, on the consent calendar, it, it may, the change that is intended may be more impactful than, than the, the school district thinks to our, our neighborhood parks. And then I think this is my last comment right now, is that I, we all got a letter from, from the school board president, I assume it's from the, the whole school board, with a number of line items that they feel they're not paid for. These are things like, let's see, I have them in front of me, upgrades to HVAC. They need a more transparent and amicable accounting system for fields. Equipment that they purchased for Vargas Elementary. So, but there's a whole list of line items. And I just wanted to make the author of the, of the letter aware that there are a bunch of things that the city pays for as well. The council member asked staff what those were, and it was to the tune of something like $3 million per year. So possibly one of the things we need to do is review all those line items and see which ones are still appropriate and which, when we may be buying things that one or the other party thinks are no longer, you know, maybe they're out of date, because we seem to all be spending a lot of money in ways that maybe are not the best possible way. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Madachek.
Thank you. So I thought when the Vice Mayor was talking about the differences between this topic and an earlier topic, he was going to go in a very different direction than he did. So I'll, I'll share what I thought he was going to say, because it's my perspective, which is, you know, while these both might be fences, and the, there's two big differences from my perspective, and there's probably a lot of small ones too. But the two big ones are, first, you know, the Montaloma open space is a shared use school field and a neighborhood park, whereas the courtyard between Google buildings is not. And the second is Google didn't propose to put a fence around the entire perimeter, whereas that is what's being discussed for the Montaloma area. And so I think they're vastly different. I don't think we would be necessarily discussing this here tonight if what was proposed in Montaloma was similar to what was proposed in, for Google, as Councilmember Hicks pointed out. So, and I appreciate the draft letter. I do have other things that I would like to see added to it. I'm not quite sure how you want to manage this, Mayor Kamey. Do you want us to all list what we would like to see changed, and then we'll do a summary as a motion, or? Anyone to do that?
Sure. Why don't, why don't I turn to, to staff and ask them what would be most helpful in, in how we are providing our feedback? So, Ms. McCarthy, is there, is there a method that you would like? Because I know that Councilmember Hicks also gave some feedback.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think if we, if you want to go ahead and say what the feedback is, Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think if we, if you want to go ahead and say what the feedback is, and then we'll just need to get consensus on that to include that in the draft letter, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So I do agree with the comments that Councilmember Hicks made regarding the letter. And for me, I would, on page two, when it talks about the following, where identified as the city's desired, the city's desired outcomes for fencing, I think I changed that to perimeter security. And, and then on the second bullet point in that section, I would say something about, you know, if fencing is the desired or agreed upon solution, that in addition to maximizing community access to the open space, we would also want to preserve the paths that provide connectivity from the neighborhood on, toward the back of the campus. I also want to add in some of the items that were in the discussion, the last time we talked about this, that were part of the motion, and that was that while this letter is specific to the Montaloma Working Group, and we do expect working groups to be formed for other shared use facilities. And, and I guess I would say, and it's okay if not all of them have a working group, but I would like to make sure that we say that there needs to be good outreach to the neighborhoods, not just the parents of the children in the schools, but the neighborhoods, to let them know what's going on and to get their input and to see if a working group makes sense to form. So I want to broaden this to include that. That's probably it for now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Abbe Koga, and then Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments that have already been made. In terms of the letter, I think it is, I think it's covers our, our points well. I, I want to emphasize, as others have, that, you know, I firmly believe that we can come to some kind of agreeable solution for both sides. It's not going to be maybe 100% for everyone, but I, I, you know, I do think we can come to some middle ground compromise. And so I would, you know, look to continuing to work in a collaborative fashion, and I think the letter covers that. I, I think it's already been said, I, I guess, what we did earlier with the Google project had actually gave us some suggestions or ideas. So, you know, I, I think that there is opportunity to come up with some other options than what's already been presented. So in terms of the letter, and I'll just respond to Councilmember Madacek's suggestions. I, I, I'm fine with the, the change to perimeter, perimeter security, I think you mentioned. And the other option, the only one that I just wanted to, I guess, comment just a little further on is the working group. And, you know, I don't want to prescribe that so much. I think, at least from what I've seen in terms of public comments and, you know, posts and whatnot, it seems like most of the neighborhoods around the schools are pretty aware of this change of, of this, this consideration of fencing. But I would say that it would be helpful to get some kind of input mechanism for if they were to, if the, they will move, if the school district plans to move forward with fencing, like the, the design, and that, I think there's a lot of talk about that and how the Google fences are, you know, are going to be very artistic, and, and there might be some interest there from the neighborhood to, yeah, have some say in what kind of fencing would go around the school. So, yeah, I, I don't know if we need to go as far as to say every school should have a working group, but at least ensure some kind of mechanism for good, for extensive community input if there is interest in doing so. So, I guess, that would just be my comments on the letter. I know that is the main point for tonight's agenda item. I do want to mention and comment on the other items. As already stated, some of these other, these issues, you know, are, are, are beyond this school fencing, the issue of parks and open space. You know, I think the challenge is, is, is it's been mentioned, as, you know, some have advocated for the need for more housing. You know, there are trade offs there. And, you know, we are a limited city of 13 square miles, and there's only so much you can build on that land. So I think, you know, that's, but at least some of us on the council have tried to emphasize and maintain a balance of all of the needs and realizing that, yes, the space is limited. So, you know, I don't, that's why I don't think we should be building in every, a house in every open space. And I think, I think we need to have a balance to be able to preserve our quality of life here. And so I know that we are doing the Parks and Open Space Plan Update. So I look forward to that conversation and, and delving into these each, each issues further than. I think the joint use agreement is also being worked on, so there's definitely been some input and suggestions on what we can add to enhance that. And then I, I know my name came up a couple of times about organized sports and moving them, moving them off of impacted green spaces. And just to provide context, and I, I saw it in the staff report that part of the, there'll be a recreation plan update as well, I believe it's called. And part of this actually came about, if I remember correctly, about when, in regards to the fee schedule, back in, during the Great Recession, we were looking at trying, having to increase fees. And one of the discoveries I remember was that we are, what we charge for our fields was way, much, much lower than at our neighboring city of Los Angeles charges. And so when you have these combined MVLA organized sports, they were tending to come to Mountain View to use our, our fields. I don't know if that's still the, the situation, but I'm, you know, definitely would like to look at that, because I think that has impacted us in terms of the demand. And, and I don't think necessarily that we should be responsible for, for providing, you know, the supply for that demand. So that, that's, that was my thought around this issue of organized sports. So with that, yes, I, I think I will support moving forward with this letter. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really appreciate all the bullet points that are in the, the letter that was drafted. And I, I would just like to see an amplification of our commitment to our shared constituents. I, I, I think that the thing that's been kind of hardest to take about some of the communications that we've received are when folks are given intimation that we have to care about the safety of the children as, as if the city doesn't. And that is our, our, our first commitment. And really reinforcing, you know, the physical safety and, and physical health and mental health of children and families in our community. And I, I don't think it necessarily belongs in the letter, but I, I wanted to surface this comment. Is that when there is a fence, if, if there is in the future, around playing fields, there are families that will not use that, the facility, even if it's unlocked. And whether it be due to language differences or different understandings of, you know, ordinances and things like that, there, there will be families that will be excluded from those parks just by virtue of a fence being around it and having the understanding, even if it's, you know, incorrect, that it's a place that they're not to go. And so I think that we should be thinking about that in, in the discussions that we have with the district and, and all the different parties. And I'm also very interested in something that Councilmember Hicks talked about is getting, really grappling as a council with the open space that's currently available and looking at, at what alternatives that we have. And also thinking about, you know, the security concerns and what kinds of steps that we should be taking as a community relative to gun safety and other issues like that. And so I'd just like to see a, a real amplification of the fact that these are, are shared constituents within the letter.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yes, a lot has been said. A lot of good things have been said. I, I, I want, I think that, that what we want to make sure is stated very clearly is that our takeaway is that we want to maximize our residents' access to open space. That's really what we're after. And we don't care whether the residents are, you know, little guys at school, or, you know, or 90 year olds. You know, we want to maximize the access to all of our residents, and, you know, as, as much as is possible. There isn't a statement in here about COVID and the period we are currently in. Given all the communications that have gone on about how, you know, there's a penal code about not using the school, the, the, the grounds during the school hours, et cetera, et cetera, I really think we should add a sentence that says, you know, we want to make it clear that during the emergency, while the, while the kids are not in school, people are welcome to use the open space at the, the schools. And I don't think we've heard anything to the contrary along that line, but I think it would be good because of all the questions that are being raised, to just state it explicitly. Another thing that bothered me as somebody who has done a lot of stakeholder work, one time, I had a job where I ran a watershed council that had 23 signatory agencies. One of the, one of the things, the, the sort of rules of facilitators is they're supposed to be neutral parties. And having the business director for the, 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 the school district function as the facilitator doesn't meet that test. So I, I would really like us to request that, that a neutral facilitator be, be provided. And then the other thing is, I, I, I just looking at the numbers, I think it would be really nice to have another staff member representing the city. We just have one representative, and that seems like it's putting a tremendous amount of pressure on that one person. And also just might be good to have another perspective, another staff member, particularly somebody from the city manager's office. And, and then the other thing, I, I, I just concur with, that everybody has said. We have a longstanding partnership with a laundry list of, of, of things that we work on together. And both agencies, you know, both jurisdictions, the city and the, you know, and the public schools, have every desire to continue that. We want to do that. So, so this is really local diplomacy at work. You know, how can we make, you know, how can we get this to, to meet the needs of, of all of our constituents? And, and keep them safe. So I would like to have, have a, a statement about maximizing the residents' access to open space, use of the fields all, you know, during school hours, during the COVID pandemic, when the, you know, the schools are not in session. And I'm, I'm interested in adding another seat with a city staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I took notes and everyone's additions correctly. Not sure if you just want me to kind of read out what I heard. City Manager McCarthy, is that, would that be helpful to staff? I'm not sure if we can take these in aggregate, or if you needed strong motions on any of these.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are a couple that I think are pretty broad that fit with the spirit of the letter that, that we can incorporate. There are a couple that are a little more detailed that I want to make sure that there's consensus on council about. So if I could just start at the beginning. So going to Councilmember Madacek's letter. So I think the change to perimeter security, that's something, of course, we can do easily. Maximizing the community access, preserving paths towards the back of the campus as much as possible. I think that's okay. The question that I would have of council is the next item. Because I did hear Councilmember Abbe Koga talk about this with a different perspective. So in terms of working groups or some sort of outreach for the other neighborhoods, I, I would want a straw poll on that, whether that should be included in the letter, just since there was diverse feedback on that.
Okay. So on this topic, I see Councilmember Madacek's hand and Councilmember Shaw Walter's hand. So, Councilmember Madacek, we can start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't say it, we absolutely have to have a working group for each shared use facility. I said we'd need to determine if we need one for each by checking with the neighborhood to see, are they aware of that? Do they have any concerns? And I'm guessing it's more than Montaloma, but I don't think it is every single site. But I don't know where the balance is. So I just wanted to check to make sure people are aware of it, and then they make the decision on the working groups. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Ditto what Councilmember Madacek said.
Okay. Great. Thanks. City Manager McCarthy, does that provide some clarity there on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And then we can continue through your list.
Yes, thank you. So I think the other item I'm hearing is from Councilmember Lieber, the amplification of the commitment to the shared constituents. Absolutely, we can make sure to reiterate that in the letter. Then from Councilmember Shaw Walter, we can make sure to add something about COVID and how that layers in with, with what's going on and being open now while school is not in session. I have been told that there will be a neutral facilitator facilitating the working group, but it's not going to be school district staff. So that will be taking place. And as far as another staff member from the city, I'll need to assess that with staff to determine whether we actually have the resource or ability to have someone from the city manager's office there, but I will definitely see if we can make that happen as well. So I think I hit all of the top points. Let me know if there's anything that I missed.
Sure. So I think as we're, as we're incorporating COVID, also being cognizant and sensitive to that, some, I'm not sure if Montaloma's doing support pods right now, but I know some of the schools are. So maybe, you know, if possible, or, you know, working around that, that topic. And then one thing that I did hear that Councilmember Hicks brought up, that was of interest to me, was outreach to the city council when there are any changes to the, to the joint use agreement, or just kind of the heads up that there might be something coming down the pipeline. And I think that that would be nice to include in the letter just for council awareness. I'm not sure how others feel, but I thought that that was a good suggestion. Okay, I see, I see nodding heads.
So Mayor, if I might add, just as a point of process. So Mayor, if I might add just as a point of um, process. So the joint use agreement has been discussed um, by city staff and school district staff for about the last year and a half or two years. Um, and there are some um, items that um, they have been talking about for quite a while and uh, we haven't come to agreement yet on, on some items. So um, one of the things that was mentioned in a prior meeting was for council to discuss the joint use agreement as a whole. And I noted at that time that that is something that's gonna take, it's a big package to unfold and it's gonna take um, a lot of time to do that. So I would note that um, this likely, it's, it's better to put this on your um, your work plan that's coming up um, because it's, there's not necessarily changes right now that we would be bringing to council. So I think that feedback we can take and incorporate into that project as part of the work plan, certainly. Um, and then I would defer to the city attorney. I know that um, his office has also been working on it in terms of changing the language in the joint use agreement. I believe that's also something that would have to be um, agreed upon by the school district. So we can take all that feedback you've just given into consideration as part of our conversations with the school district right now.
Yes, that's correct, uh, city manager. That language would need to be mutually negotiated. And uh, I agree with your suggestion about, about the process, how to do that.
Okay, all right. So um, we went through, I think, our, our list of comments and tried to incorporate them and heard some feedback on maybe um, how some items can move forward. Um, does anyone have anything else that we may have missed on this topic? Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yes, um, what happened with the checklist that uh, Councilmember Hicks brought up? I don't necessarily know that that needs to be in the letter, but, but uh, you know, the idea of the checklist that, of um, things that we hadn't paid for properly yet and what's going on with that?
So Councilmember Shaw Walter, um, I think there's a bit of disagreement about what is and isn't on that list. So as I just mentioned, the, the city staff and school district staff have been discussing this joint use agreement for.
Okay, so that's included in that. That's fine, Camera. I didn't understand that. That's great.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, I think that there's a lot of technical things that staff's working out and there may be some misunderstanding between staff that we need to still work out right now. Um, but that is something that we will be working on.
Great. Hopefully that answers your question, Councilmember Shaw Walter. All right. All right, anything left on this topic? All right. Well, I think staff has what they need. So um, thank you to Mr. Marshawn and thank, oh, yes, City Manager McCarthy.
Sorry, Mayor, for the late addition. So I do want to note that I found out that um, the school is expected to reopen in three weeks and there are support pods on the campus. So I just wanted to let council know that.
And uh, for the mayor's benefit, we, we will need a, a motion for this item for the, uh, and I, I could maybe suggest that it would be uh, the staff recommendation plus the edits that were summarized by the city manager if there is consensus among council on those edits.
Thank you, City Attorney Chopra. You, uh, you beat me to it. So, does anyone have a motion? Councilmember Maticek.
Happy to make the motion that uh, the staff recommendation on the letter with all of the items that city manager uh, listed and that we all kind of nodded our heads to.
Great, thank you. So Councilmember Maticek made the motion. Councilmember Robby Koga.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second, so we'll turn it over for a roll call vote to our interview. Councilmember Abby Koga.
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Maticek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yes, and thank you all for bearing with me this evening.
Mayor Kamay.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So that motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item eight, council staff committee reports. Do any council members have uh, anything to report? Yes, Councilmember Shaw Walter and then Councilmember Robby Koga.
Yes, I'd like to share that we had a um, a council neighborhoods committee uh, meeting on February eighteenth and uh, I attended and Sally Lieber and Lucas Ramirez, um, the other members of the committee. And we were joined by Anna Salvador, Wayne Chen, and Lisa Roche from our staff. And we had a great briefing about the Neighborhood Association Grant Program, which as you know, has been going for many years and, and is very popular. We, we decided to keep the same level of support that we have had in the last few years um, because um, we just thought raising the amount of money in uh, this, these budget times was probably not a good idea. So we're gonna make that recommendation and um, and we're uh, then we went over the work plan. We will be having a um, a virtual networking meeting of the neighborhood associations in April. And that's gonna, going to give all the neighborhood associations an opportunity to understand the grant program and the application program and also to provide an opportunity for our neighborhood associations to share um, the creative things that they've done during COVID, which with their money. Um, you know, in the past, uh, neighborhood association grants were primarily used for um, you know, ice cream socials or um, uh, you know, lots of big get-togethers in food. And of course, during COVID, we haven't been able to have big get-togethers in food. So people have been very creative about um, what to do with their money. And um, there is quite, you know, there's some more time before the end of the uh, calendar year, I mean, the fiscal year, to do more events. So we want to share that with other people. Um, and we're gonna have three neighborhood meetings this year as we normally do. And I'd just like to thank staff um, for being so well organized. It's very good.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Robby Koga.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to report on a few um, regional board meetings that I've attended recently. Uh, first from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and um, please bear with me. I, I have a kind of some extensive reports, but I think these are important points to um, to, to share with everyone. So um, uh, so Clean Energy will be um, adjusting rates. We do this about twice a year and our rates are based on P G and E's rates. So as P G and E reduces or increases their rates, we adjust accordingly. Our policy is to try to keep within one percent uh, below uh, P G needs generation rates. So we will be adjusting our rates by two point three percent uh, taking effect in March. Um, we also uh, are continuing to build our um, sources of carbon-free electricity. And we just approved a hydro power um, contract uh, with the Central Valley Project. And this will be um, adding to our mix of um, clean power sources. Um, we also, uh, this is something that I think the public um, may be um, aware of or becoming aware of. But um, historically, most of our customers are billed for electricity usage on a tiered rate. And that will, so the prices are based on how much is used. Um, in June, our customers will be opted into a time of use billing rate as part of a mandatory statewide transition. And these changes, electricity pricing from how much is used to when it is used with higher prices from four to nine P M. There's been a lot of commercials and notices about this. Um, so hopefully our residents are aware of that change that is coming um, as of June of this year. But I just wanted to also bring it up at this, um, at this time. Um, so that was for Clean Energy. Um, I attended a V T A. Um, we had a workshop on the, it's called the Next Gen Solutions, I believe. It's basically about the future of light rail. And we had a workshop on this on Friday. Um, this, the board and staff has been studying what to do. The light rail um, cars are coming to the end of their uh, life. And so um, they've been studying what to do, whether to just replace them, to change the system, whatnot. Um, there, um, I, I was actually pleased because this is a San Jose delegation um, mentioned the interest in more innovative, new technologies. They're actually studying um, similar to our A G T study, um, similar systems and to use um, for in San Jose. And so from the North End and South End, I thought it was great that we, that we um, converged on that idea of um, you know, of studying more innovative and new technologies that could hopefully increase frequency, usability, time, and increase ridership because the light rail system as it is now is very minimal in its use. Um, I wanted to bring that, something up with from my M T C work. Um, as I, as you know, M T C and A B A G are basically merging. They have the same staff now. So we actually get to um, talk about some of the work being done on housing. Um, and I learned about a pro, a program called the Housing Incentive Pool. There's been about uh, seventy-five million dollars put into this. And um, it's a five-year program. It's, they call it the Race to the Top Incentive. And so um, the top fifteen jurisdictions that produce the most affordable housing in uh, by a certain income category as well as P D As and T, the transit priority areas will get to share in this pot of funding. Um, as of right now, Mountain View is in sixth place. So we just need to be in the top fifteen. Um, San Francisco is number one, but um, I just thought it was great that we're actually in the, in the, in that group. And, and I hope that we can maintain that. It's until twenty twenty-two, I believe. And then they'll decide who gets the fifth, the, the pot of money. So that we're in the mix right now and I hope we stay there and maybe we'll even move up in the rankings. Um, and then finally, the city's association, uh, we had a presentation by the chambers, a coalition of chambers um, asking for support um, with of course, businesses, um, our, our own chamber. Uh, CEO Peter Katz was a part of this um, discussion. And the other request was that we work with them to um, ask that the county follow the state's orders in terms of um, you know, opening businesses and what kinds of businesses and so forth. And I know that's uh, still an issue of discussion, but um, I just wanted to mention that request as it came from our own, um, our, our own CEO, chamber CEO. And so that's it. Thank you so much for your patience in listening.
Great, thank you. Anyone else with anything they'd like to share? I'll just share, we had a V T A Policy Advisory Board meeting the other week where we make recommendations and grateful that Councilmember Abe Koga is happy sending us on V T A so we can be well represented. All right. Um, and then bef, before we close, just want to remind those who are still with us or who are watching um, that we um, still have the Rental Housing Committee and the Public Safety Advisory Board are open for your applications. So um, please feel free to do that. I think they're due um, by the end of the, the week. All right, so um, item nine, um, is there a closed session report, City Attorney Chopra?
There's no closed session report tonight.
Great, thank you. So that moves us on to adjournment. So thank you so much, everyone, for joining us. And our next regular city council meeting will be on March night. So until then, stay healthy, stay safe, mask up, and have a good night. Thank you.